Welcome, everybody, to our second Common Council meeting of the month. It will not be our last, but we'll talk about that in a minute. But thank you all for coming. It's always great to see people in the crowd. Madam Clerk, will you please read the adequate notice of compliance statement?
Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by the City Clerk's Office in preparation of the council annual meeting notice dated December 16th, 2024, which was properly distributed and posted per statutory requirements. Please be advised that fire exits are to my right, your left, and at the back of the room. The city has a listening system to assist the hearing impaired. If anyone needs hearing assistance, please obtain the system at the dais and return it thereafter.
Thank you so much. Roll call, please.
Mr. Boyer.
Present.
Ms. Hamlet.
Here.
Ms. Kamenson.
Here.
Mr. Polowski.
Here.
Ms. Smallwood.
Ms. Toth.
Here.
Council President McTiernan.
Present. All right, at this time, I'd like to call on Ms. Emily Griffith to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Ms. Griffith. All right, at this time, Madam Clerk, will you please read the explanatory note regarding closed session and hearings and comment, please?
A closed-session meeting is authorized by state statute, was announced and held prior to the start of this meeting, and the known items for discussion were listed on the published closed-session agenda. Please be advised that council meetings are broadcast live on Comcast Channel 34 and 36, and Verizon Channel 30, and rebroadcast on Thursdays and Saturdays on HTTV on Comcast Channel 36 and Verizon 33. When invited to speak, please come to the lectern, clearly state your name and address, spell your last name, and speak into the podium microphone so that your comments can be understood by all and properly recorded. Whenever an audience or council member reads from a prepared statement, please give or email a copy to thecityclerk@cityclerk@cityofsummit.org. To help facilitate an orderly meeting and to permit all to be heard, speakers shall limit their comments to three minutes. Unless you are using an electronic device to follow the meeting agenda or need it for professional emergency contact purposes, please turn it off. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, do I have a motion to approve the minutes for regular enclosed-session meetings of June 3, 2025?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Six oh. Okay. All right, we're on to our report section of our meeting. Madam Mayor, do you have a report for us this evening?
Of course I do.
Awesome.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Please remember that the middle school and high school graduations are happening tomorrow, June 17, and Wednesday, June 18, at Tatlock Park. Fingers crossed the rain holds off. Heavy traffic and limited parking are expected in the areas surrounding Tatlock Park on both graduations. Please abide by all signage and do not block driveways when parking on the street. And of course, I want to extend a big congratulations to all of our graduates. I hope you have a wonderful summer and best wishes in these exciting new chapters ahead. The City of Summit's annual Juneteenth event will be held this Friday, June 20, on the Village Green, from 4:30 to 8:00 p.m. There will be musical and dancing performances, a flag-raising ceremony, food trucks, children's activities, and more. Hope to see you there. Earlier this month, we held a swearing-in ceremony for our newest police sergeant, Collins Carpelo. He's been a member of the Summit Police Department since 2018, serving on the patrol and detective bureaus, as well as the Union County Emergency Response Team and the Union County SWAT Team. I had the privilege of officiating his promotional ceremony, and he's a really incredible, very impressive guy, and I wish him well in his new role. The next installment of our city newsletter will be arriving in your mailbox very soon with your third-quarter estimated taxes. This newsletter highlights recent news and upcoming events, including the 100 Years of Recreation celebration, summer concerts, and movies on the Village Green, and much more. And lastly, but definitely not, most importantly, actually, definitely most importantly, our esteemed clerk is celebrating 46 years of marriage today, and she is celebrating here with us. Happy anniversary, Rosie and Frank. Happy anniversary, Rosie and Frank.
Thank you very much.
That's all I have.
Wow, that's gonna be tough.
Hopefully Frank's watching.
That's gonna be tough to follow.
Happy anniversary, Frank.
Yeah. All right, Ms. Baldwin, do you have a city administrator report this evening?
I do. I do. Thank you, Council President. Good evening, everyone. City offices will be closed this Friday, June 20. Friday is also a parking holiday in Summit with no fees required for on-street parking or parking municipal lots and garages. Trash and recycling collections are not affected by the holiday, so that will proceed as is usual. An update with our tier parking garage. As a reminder, the third and fourth levels of the tier parking garage off of Springfield Avenue and Maple Street are temporarily closed due to a structural inspection. The ground level is still open for shops parking, and the first and second levels are still open for permit parking. During this time, we ask you to park in an alternate long-term lot. The parking map is available on the city website at cityofsummit.org/parking. PSCNG has provided the Division of Engineering with a schedule for upcoming milling and paving operations on several streets in Summit, beginning this Thursday, June 19, and continuing through next Wednesday, June 25, weather permitting, of course. The schedule is available on the homepage of the city website and at cityofsummit.org/construction. And lastly, we've launched a new initiative to help keep our drains clear of debris this summer. Residents can adopt a drain and commit to checking on it twice a month and removing leaves and any trash. You can also name your drain and compete for the best drain name. More information is available at cityofsummit.org/adoptadrain. And that completes my report. Thank you.
All right, you're giving me something to think about now.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Baldwin. All right, for my council president report, I've got two things. One, Mr. Guida has a bigger one of these, but on Thursday, June 26, we're gonna be celeb-- the Summit Elks is celebrating 100 years of excellence in parks and recreation in our lovely municipality. This is a fundraiser. It's a $75 ticket at the Dorf, at the Elks. It will include dinner and beverages. The proceeds, as many of you know, the Elks has agreed as part of their mission to support youth, as well as they also are big supporters of veterans. They have agreed to help to raise money and help us with our Tatlock playground improvements. So it's a great public-private partnership. This is part of what they're doing in order for their to raise money on their own to help make this happen. So if you are around on Thursday and want to go to the Elks, it's for a good cause. And like I said, you'll have dinner and beverages and a very nice evening to boot. The second part of my council president report, I just want to give everybody an update on the never-ending saga of our round three and round four commitments for Mount Laurel. We are drawing very quickly to a close on round three. Round three officially ends on Jan-- sorry, June 30. And I am told by our legal representatives that we should have a signed agreement that we're all set to go for round three as of tomorrow morning. I think they met with judges last week, and everything's been signed off on, except for the ink isn't dry yet. So, and so just to reiterate, as far as our round three components go, we did meet our RDP of 36 units for round three. And round three, just for the people who are not as immersed in this as others are, this was a 10-year plan to promote affordable housing in our community. We're about to enter into a new 10-year plan that will start on August 1. So as part of our 10-year plan just ending, we did satisfy the 36-unit RDP. We also had in our agreement, we agreed to facilitate the construction on a best-effort basis to get to 50 new units of affordable housing, and happily, that did happen. So we've got, we complied over to, we actually did do it, not just facilitated, it happened. So that's 50 units there, and now we're, and now we're, so putting that to bed and now starting the round four. For the public, there was a planning board meeting that talked about a couple of proposals that happened. The planning board has put on their website on the 13th, so that was three days ago, what the proposal for our round four plan will be. That's going to be spoken about and voted on at the planning board meeting on the 23rd of this month. So I would encourage everyone who is interested in that to check the website. It's up there now. There's a 10-day notice period for all of that. And based on, I think, we've, there's numbers in there, RDP numbers, what we think going forward. All that will be discussed at the planning board. That is the public forum for discussion there. So if you do have, are interested in this, I encourage you, please, to go on the website, look at the numbers, reach out if you have questions about them, and then attend the meeting and make your voices heard. This is important. It's gonna set the stage for our affordable housing plan for the next 10 years. Once the planning board votes on that, we will have a special council meeting the following day, on June 24, where we will give a thumbs up or thumbs down on the plan.
It's 5:00 p.m.
And that's at 5:00 o'clock, so it's a special session. That will be the only thing on the agenda for that meeting. If that gets passed, that will be the plan that gets put in with New Jersey for the, our obligation for round four. And that, I think, is my council president report. Okay. Do we have, Councilman Polowski, we have a historical minute today?
Not really, but I could talk about history for about a minute.
Do you want to take a picture?
No, no. So I have reported in the past about how our local public library has a section online about historical Summit. It has every yearbook, I think, through 2018. They may have to update that again shortly. It also has all of the local papers going back to the turn of the last century. So it's fascinating. You can get lost in it for a while. The yearbooks are especially fun. I found Rosemary. I won't say what year.
You'll have to look at my engagement picture in the summit.
Hey. Oh, that'll be next. That'll be next. But that's where I got the information about City Administrator Baldwin's family. And there are also some great books out there that are out of print, but they're all over eBay. One of them is Summit, New Jersey: From Poverty Hill to the Hill City by Edmund Raftus. Another one is 20th Century Summit, that somebody up here actually typed from a handwritten manuscript for Edward Alcott, who was a former council--
President.
--president. There's another one by Robin Little, celebrating Summit's 50th anniversary dated 1949. And there are a bunch of others. So if you have an interest in history and you want to learn more about the Hill City, there's a lot out there, and snap them up before I do.
All right. Thank you very, very much. Okay, we have a couple of presentations this evening. Our first presentation is on our city summer intern program. Megan Champney is gonna, our human resource manager, has got a lot to say about that.
I sure do. Thank you, everybody. Good evening, Mayor Fagan, Council President McTiernan, members of Common Council, and everyone joining us this evening. My name is Megan Champney-Quesalate, and I have the privilege of serving as the Human Resources Manager for the City of Summit, as well as the coordinator of our summer internship program. Most of you know, I have been here for some time. I have been here for 24 years as a City of Summit staff member, and I have tried my very best to instill in our interns how special it is to work here and what an honor it is to work for the City of Summit. While only here for a short time, I hope that they can feel just how special and what an honor it is to work for and be part of the City of Summit family. Before I begin, I want to take a moment to acknowledge and sincerely thank those department heads who have provided each of our interns an opportunity within their department. I would also like to thank our confidential administrative assistant, Debbie Perez Santala. She's here tonight as well. Her dedication and support are instrumental in ensuring that everything in administration and human resources, including the internship program, runs as smoothly and successfully as possible. This summer, we were thrilled to receive a record number of applications for our internship program. The enthusiasm and interest shown by students and emerging professionals were both humbling and inspiring. While the number of available projects and placements remains limited, we are incredibly grateful to everyone who expressed their interest and took the time to apply. To those who applied but were not selected, please don't be discouraged. And to anyone considering applying in the future, we encourage you to submit an application when the 2026 program opens next March. This program continues to grow each year, and we are always looking for bright, motivated individuals eager to learn, contribute, and make a meaningful impact within the city operations. This year's interns are each engaged in meaningful projects designed to support city functions, bring fresh perspectives, and enhance the services we provide to the Summit community. Over the past two weeks, they have immersed themselves in the workings of local government, bringing their energy, creativity, and passion for public service to every task they've undertaken. It is a true pleasure to introduce our 2025 summer interns, an exceptional group of individuals who are already making valuable contributions across a range of city departments. Please join me in welcoming Trevor Allen, who is supporting a finance-focused initiative within the Office of the City Administrator and Department of Finance; Hope Bassaman, now in her third year as a Human Resources intern, and we are delighted to welcome her back and deeply appreciate her ongoing commitment; Emily Griffith, who is collaborating on a cross-departmental project with the mayor's office, Human Resources, and Communications Office. I also used to coach Emily in gymnastics many years ago; Rex Fisk, Erica Jenkins, and Ellie Kyrem, who are each applying their talents to projects within the Department of Community Programs. Each of our interns will now come forward to introduce themselves and provide a brief overview of the work they are doing this summer. Please join me in extending a warm welcome as they continue their educational and professional journey by observing and participating in tonight's council meeting. Thank you.
My name is Trevor Allen. I am a rising junior at Indiana University and am majoring in finance and business analytics. This summer, my project involves utilizing ClearGov, a platform used to streamline a town's budget process, as well as Excel to create a published version of the City of Summit's 2025 municipal budget. Over the past few weeks, I have compiled graphs, charts, and written information about our town to help transform the budget into a format that promotes fiscal transparency and community awareness for the residents of Summit. Additionally, with the future in mind, 2025 municipal budget will serve as a template for years to come, creating a long-term streamlined process. As a dual major in finance and business analytics, I've thoroughly enjoyed applying the skills I've developed in the classroom to a real-world setting, making a meaningful contribution in my hometown. It's been rewarding to know my efforts are contributing to a community that means so much to me, and I look forward to making a continued impact for the City of Summit's residents with my fellow interns over my remaining few weeks. Thank you.
My name is Hope Bassman, and I am a rising senior at Lafayette College, studying psychology and Asian Studies with a minor in organizational studies. This is my third summer as an intern with the City of Summit, and I've had the privilege of working under our Human Resources Manager, Megan Champney-Quesalate, who's been an incredible mentor. My current project is a fun one. As some of you may or may not know, there's been a recent update to the Department of Labor's Fair Labor Standards Act. I've been working on updating our job descriptions to adhere to these changes. The new law requires the inclusion of overtime exemption status and transparent salary ranges on all job postings, both internally and externally. The exemption status is determined by individual job duties as outlined in each description. I've had the pleasure of meeting with department heads and employees across the city to make sure that everything is up to date and accurate to remain in compliance. I look forward to learning more about the specifics of the amazing jobs we have here, and if you're interested in working for the city, keep an eye out for some exciting new job openings. I've loved every minute of working for the City of Summit and am so grateful for the experience I have gained and the connections I've made with fellow interns and all staff members. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
My name is Emily Griffith, and I'm an incoming sophomore at Georgetown University, majoring in government. I'm currently interning under Mayor Fagan, collaborating with both the Human Resources Department and Communications Office. My project focuses on improving the city hall experience through signage, wayfinding, and the lobby environment. I've redesigned the city hall map and directory to make it clear where to go for various services. Inside the lobby, I've worked on making the space more welcoming by updating directional signs, using the lobby TV, and featuring local artwork. I'm also creating a webpage with short video guides that show how to get to each department from the main entrance, which will be accessible by scanning a QR code near the front door. In addition, I've been working with staff to update the city hall website to include new maps and key information to help reduce confusion before visitors even arrive. I'm so grateful for this opportunity, as I have had an amazing time working with my fellow interns, and it has been incredibly valuable working with everyone in city hall. I'm beyond excited to continue working on this and see where the project come to life.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Rex Fisk. I'm a rising sophomore, majoring in finance at James Madison University. This summer, I've had an opportunity to work in the Community Programs Department alongside David Guita. Holy, excuse me. During this time here, I've coordinated with vendors to help reduce the city's spending on the youth programs' jerseys and uniforms by nearly 50%. I've also been reviewing ordinances from other municipalities to gather information related to the installation of lights at Tatlock Field. I'm extremely grateful for this opportunity, and I've truly enjoyed my experience so far. Thank you for your time.
Hi, my name is Erica Jenkins. I'm a rising sophomore at Bates College and plan to double-major in sociology and politics. This past month, I was honored to join the Department of Community Programs as a research intern, working on two projects under the leadership of David Guida. The first was researching neighboring towns' community programming prices and financial aid availability and comparing them to ours. The initial data suggest our pricing is competitive and our financial aid is above average. The other project involved researching local nonprofits and gathering contact information to be used for fundraising and possible sponsorship for our upcoming community night in July. We hope to be contacting these nonprofits soon. It has been a pleasure working with my fellow interns in the teams at city hall and the community center. Thank you.
My name is Ellie Kyrem. I'm a rising sophomore at Skidmore College, planning to major in psychology. I've been interning for the Department of Community Programs, working for Assistant Director David Guida. I've taken on several projects with the DCP. My first project involved reaching out to local businesses to sponsor the DCP's summer events, specifically the Screen on the Green movie nights and the Hot Summer Night concert series. Additionally, I've been researching counseling and training programs to determine how we can strengthen our own, and I've contacted neighboring towns to learn more about their CIT programs and comparing them to summits. My latest project involves researching and applying for grants for the DCP, specifically grants that target organizations that provide services for communities, families, and children. I'm excited to continue these projects for the rest of my internship and to collaborate with my fellow interns and everyone at the DCP. Thank you.
Do you guys want to come up and get a picture? Don't be shy.
Yeah, you can just do it right here. That's okay. No, no, we're gonna hide. Right. Scutcheon, together. Awesome. One, two, three. Thank you.
Well, Megan, I must say, that is an impressive group of young people. Yeah, it's amazing. Feel good about our future when you see all these great people come up and we're working hard. So thank you, and thank you all for your hard work this summer. Thank you. All right, we have another presentation. This is on our government energy aggregation program. Its next steps, for those who've been following it, over the last nine months or so, the city's been engaging around trying to save our residents' money off of their electricity bills, and we're coming up to a bid thing. So we have, we're really happy to have Lisa Hibbs, who's Director of Sales and Project Management, the government sector for Concord Energy Services, to give us an update on where we are with this.
Thank you so much for the opportunity to give you this, hopefully, exciting update about the potential to save residents' money on their JCPN electric bills. Just as a reminder, this is a government energy aggregation program. It is promulgated by the Board of Public Utilities, has oversight by the Board, also ratepayer advocate, and because you joined a cooperative, also Department of Community Affairs. So all of your paperwork has been filed, your ordinance, your resolution, your, the purchasing agreement between you and the cooperative has been filed with Department of Community Affairs. Everything has been provided to Rosemary and to Tammy, so everything is filed here in the city as well, as with the entities that I just mentioned. So our next step is to actually go out to auction. So that is scheduled for, tentatively scheduled for August 12. So I say tentatively because between us and August 12 is an auction by our grid operator, PJM. PJM holds a capacity auction every year, supposed to be for three years of capacity pricing. We have been delayed. The Federal Energy Regulatory Commission has granted them some leeway in when they hold their auctions. This is due to supply and demand issues that we are having on our grid. We participate in PJM's grid with 12 other states and Washington, DC. So we have large demand for electricity. We've had some retirement from some energy generation, and we are not pulling new generation online as quickly as we need it. So residents may have noticed, or will be noticing, that effective June 1, JCPNL's rates went from 11.88 cents per kilowatt hour to over 15 cents. This will go a little bit higher in the wintertime. We're looking at the October 1 date for that. This is all sort of a result of the past PJM auction, but also just where we're seeing the energy market go. Fortunately, oddly, that puts us in a more competitive situation for the co-op. That suppressed price to compare. The state averages the past three energy auctions here in the state, so as some of those older, lower prices roll off, we are more competitive in this current energy market where we have to play. So as a reminder, on August 12, if the pricing received is not lower than that 15 cents that JCPNL is currently charging, we cannot accept the bids. They will all be rejected. We will not make a recommendation to the lead agency, which is the Borough of Lincoln Park, for the cooperative that you joined, which is the Garden Estate Community Energy Co-op. We will not make a recommendation for savings less than 5%. There's just not enough headspace for when we have reconciliation rates with JCPNL. So once we know the variable that is the PJM auction, we'll have a better idea of what that does to the potential for success on August 12. If we're seeing that there's not potential for success, we'll postpone the auction. But we'll definitely stay in touch with Rosemary and with Tammy on that as well. So on your agenda this evening is a participation form. I'm going to come here every year and give you an update on where we are with the energy market, but also ask for your-- market, but also ask for your commitment to participate or not participate in any auctions held that year. So, that way, we don't lose sight of where, where are we with the energy market as leadership changes or as staff changes come through. We don't want there to be a large gap between when we're here talking about an auction and when we're here trying to, to decide whether you'd like to participate or not. Want to give you time to make that determination for yourselves. So, on that form, there is a yes, please include our residents in the upcoming auction. There is also a no, thank you. We do not take offense to no, thank you. It just means we will not include the residents in that round, but you can always decide to call us, send in a supplemental form, and say, oh gee, you know what? We've changed our minds. Please include us in the next auction, or wait until next year when I come back, and then you can restate your commitment at that time. So, I'm happy to answer any questions.
You want to have any questions for Ms. Hibbs? I have one. So, when will residents see, the, the price just went up. When will the first bill that they receive reflect that 40-odd percent increase in their electricity costs? I don't think many people understand that that's what's coming, but that's what is happening.
Yeah, it, it depends on when their meter read is, but for your June usage, you'll see that on your July bill. So, it is coming.
So, no one's got it yet, but it'll be next month.
Yeah, we're two, we're two weeks into it. Yeah, exactly. And, so, yeah, that's when that hits. And we're asking for the auction, we are asking for a December start. We're also asking, I know this sounds odd, but a March 2026 start, and that just has to do with shoulder months and carrying sort of the, the load during the summer months versus winter months. It gets you a lower price.
So, as a follow-up, if, if the auction is successful and it goes down more than 5 percent, when would the first month that our residents would see some relief to the 40-odd percent increase in their electricity bills?
That all depends on if, when we're, when we get the bids, we will have to look at, is the December start the most advantageous or is the March start advantageous? It goes based on the lowest price received. So, residents may have to wait until March to get that lower price, but if we're, if we start in December, they'll see the savings on their January bill for their, for their December usage. And similarly, if we start in March, they would see that on their April bill for their March usage. But we will be here. I will work with Rosemary and Tammy, and we'll get the, the information kit together, and we'll have Town Hall-style meetings, we'll have Zoom meetings, just so that your residents are well-educated about the program, what it does, what it doesn't do, how to opt out. There will be an opportunity for residents to opt up into a 100 percent renewable energy product as well. Might cost more, will likely cost more than the standard minimum renewable requirement, but that option will be there for those that want to take advantage of that, and we track all those statistics for you.
Great, thank you. Other questions? All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Could I just ask one question of Lisa?
Sure.
On the participation form, there's a yes or no.
Yes.
So, in, in addition to the council considering the, the resolution, they're, they've got to let us know, or is that incorporated in the resolution?
That's incorporated in the resolution that you're considering, and I will hang out for that.
Okay.
Just in case there's questions at that moment.
So, if they pass the resolution, it's automatic yes.
Perfect.[836.29][836.29](coughing)
Thank you. Okay, that finishes up our presentation section of our meeting. We're now up to ordinances for hearing, which we do have one this evening. Madam Clerk, will you please read the, the Finance Ordinance for Hearing?
Yes. Ordinance number 25-3343, an ordinance to establish the 2025 salaries, wages, or compensations of and for the officers and employees of the City of Summit, County of Union, New Jersey.
Thank you so much. Councilwoman Toth.
Thank you, Council President. This annual ordinance sets forth salary ranges for city employees. Those covered by union contracts will receive the agreed-upon cost of living increase. Non-union employees will receive a 2.75 percent cost of living increase, which is in line with the more recent union contracts. This ordinance also sets forth step increases based on an employee's date of hire and job performance. I move to open the hearing on this ordinance.
Second. Okay, roll call, please.
Well, we want to open the hearing.
Oh, we're opening the hearing.
Open the hearing.
Do we have to vote to open the hearing?
You made a motion and a second, now you open the hearing.
Oh, okay.
It's already open, so now you can open to the public.
There we go. All right. What would I be, where would I be without Rosie? So, does anyone from the public wish to make a comment on this ordinance? Hearing none. I'll close the public section of this hearing. Is anyone from council like to comment on this ordinance?
Council President.
Yes, please, Ms., Councilman Boyer.
In the, in the packet, it mentions performance evaluations, right? When, how often will they be performed? Is this going to be, I guess this question is to the city administrator. Is this going to be twice a year? And if so, are the, is senior leadership involved in this? Like, will there be evaluations of the department heads and even the city manager?
Through you, Council President. The city staff is, has performance evaluations done by their department heads coinciding with their anniversary dates, which is either the date you got hired, or if you have subsequently received a promotion, that might change your anniversary date. So, it's in January, July, it's once a year. There are also probationary performance evaluations, so if there's a new staff member, they typically get a 30, 60, 90, and 120-day evaluation. Having just been appointed the city administrator in January, my plan is to do the department head evaluations at the end of the year to give a fair, probably in November, to give a fair evaluation period with me in this position and overseeing that. And then, I would very much like my own performance evaluation. That would have to be coordinated perhaps through our Human Resources Manager along with the council and mayor.
Thank you for that. And it, it mentions that if there is a, a, a underperformance, right, they would not get a bonus, or they would not get a raise, right? Now, in, in that situation, would the employee know if they're being evaluated once a year? Right, do they get a heads up at some point that they're not performing up to standard?
So, again, through you, Council President. When you do the performance evaluation, there's a range between needs improvement all the way up to excellent. That's kind of distributed among the different tenants of the evaluation. And if you're in grade and you're still in the steps and you're not subject to the COLA, the Cost of Living Increase, you, depending on your date of hire, you can be given zero, one, or two steps merit increase. For those hired before a certain date in 2016, we don't have too many of those anymore. They're, they're kind of maxed out at the top, and they're receiving the COLA, but they were able to receive between zero and four steps. So, those steps are indicative of your performance, and you are given feedback. Part of the evaluation process is that, as a department head, you sit with those on your staff that you evaluate, you go through the whole performance evaluation with them. There's an open dialogue, there's room for them to also provide feedback of their own on that performance evaluation, so everything is very transparent and they're very aware. If something occurs outside of the normal performance evaluation cycle, that is also addressed separately.
Thank you, City Administrator Baldwin. I think my only suggestion would be that if there is an employee that is, is going to get a less than favorable rating, that they get a heads up prior to their final performance evaluation. So, let's say mid-year, we know that the employee's going to get a poor rating. It should be included in there that there is some type of conversation that happens, so it's not a surprise, you know, that's all. Thank you, Council President. Fall ahead.
Thank you. Other comments or questions from council? All right, I'm going to declare the hearing closed then, and we're moving on to ordinances for final consideration. Madam Clerk, will you please read the Finance Ordinance for Final Consideration?
Ordinance number 25-3343, an ordinance to establish the 2025 salaries, wages, or compensations of and for the officers and employees of the City of Summit, County of Union, New Jersey.
Thank you so much. Councilwoman Toth.
Thank you, Council President. And having just closed the public hearing on this ordinance, I move it for final adoption.
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Boyer.
Aye.
Ms. Hamlet.
Aye.
Ms. Kamison.
Aye.
Mr. Pulaski.
Aye.
Ms. Toth.
Aye.
Council President.
Aye. Motion carries. All right, we're on to the part of our meeting for ordinances for introduction, and we do have a few today. So, Madam Clerk, could you please read the Finance Ordinance for Introduction?
ID number 11977, an ordinance appropriating funds for school improvements in the City of Summit, County of Union, New Jersey, and authorizing issuance of $12,606,500 of school bonds or notes of the city to meet said appropriation.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Toth.
Thank you, Council President. Following the adoption of the school board's budget, the city is to issue debt on its behalf. The school district repays that debt. This ordinance appropriates funds and authorizes debt issuance of $12,606,500 for capital projects at Brayton and Franklin Elementary Schools, at the Lawton C. Johnson Summit Middle School, and at the Summit High School. And of that total, $5,42,600 is refundable from the State Commissioner of Education, so the Summit School Board's ultimate cost is $7,563,900. I move to introduce this ordinance.
Second. All right, roll call, please.
Mr. Boyer.
Aye.
Ms. Hamlet.
Aye.
Ms. Kamison.
Aye.
Mr. Pulaski.
Aye.
Ms. Toth.
Aye.
President McTiernan.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, on to the second ordinance for introduction, Madam.
And, and announce the hearing date.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. The hearing date for that first ordinance will be July 1st, 2025. Madam Clerk, will you please read the first Safety and Health Ordinance for Introduction?
ID number 11984, an ordinance amending the Code, Chapter 2, Administration, Article 4, Departments Created, Section 2-15, Department of Police, Subsection 2-15.1, Establishment.
Thank you very much. Councilman Boyer.
Thank you, Council President. This ordinance, 24-3320, proposes two important updates to the City Code regarding the structure of the Summit Police Department. First, it increases the number of authorized sworn personnel from 50 to 52, adjusting the ranks to allow up to nine sergeants and up to 38 police officers. This change reflects the department's evolving staff needs and has already been accounted for in the adopted 2025 municipal budget. Second, it removes outdated language referencing the auxiliary police unit, which is no longer active. The ordinance also includes a provision allowing the police department to temporarily exceed staffing limits for up to 180 days during transitions such as retirements to ensure continuity of service. With that, I move that ordinance, 243320, be scheduled for a hearing on July 1st, 2025.
Correct.
Second.
All right, roll call, please.
Mr. Boyer.
Aye.
Ms. Hamlet.
Aye.
Ms. Kamison.
Aye.
Mr. Pulaski.
Aye.
Ms. Toth.
Aye.
President McTiernan.
Aye. Motion carries. All right, Madam Clerk, would you be kind enough to read the second Safety and Health Ordinance for Introduction?
ID number 11896, an ordinance amending and supplementing the Code, Chapter 10, Animal Control, Section 2-14, Vicious Dogs.
Thank you. Councilman Boyer.
Thank you once again, Council President. This is, this ordinance, 11896, repeals and replaces Section 10-2.14 of the City Code concerning vicious dogs, and creates a new framework for handling cases where a dog has exhibited aggressive behavior that causes injury or distress but does not meet the state's legal threshold to be declared vicious or potentially dangerous. While New Jersey allows for certain designations and penalties in serious or repeated cases, this ordinance introduces a local classification, aggressive dog, which allows the municipality, the municipal court, excuse me, to act in situations involving unprovoked attacks that cause bodily injury. It also provides the court with the flexibility to impose fines, require muzzling, and tethering in public, and implement other safety measures where needed. This ordinance was developed in response to an increase in resident concerns and helps close the gaps in enforcement, allowing the city to proactively address unsafe situations before they escalate. With that, I move that ordinance, 243320, be scheduled for a public hearing at our next regularly scheduled meeting on July 1st, 2025.
Second.
Okay, thank you very much. Roll call, please.
Mr. Boyer.
Aye.
Ms. Hamlet.
Aye.
Ms. Kamison.
Aye.
Mr. Pulaski.
Aye.
Ms. Toth.
Aye.
President McTiernan.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, moving to our last ordinance for introduction. Madam Clerk, will you please read the Capital Projects and Community Service Ordinance?
ID number 11786, an ordinance of the City of Summit, County of Union, New Jersey, repealing Section 2-29, Historic Preservation Commission of the Revised General Ordinances of the City of Summit, and creating a new Part 5 Historic Preservation of Chapter 35 Development Regulations.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Hamlet.
Actually, I'm going to have Councilman Pulaski do this.
Thank you. This is ordinance ID number 11786. This one's near and dear to me, and it requires some background and some explanation, so bear with me a little bit here. As the winds of development and so-called progress sweep through Summit, you may have noticed our historic homes are taking a beating. I strongly encourage Planning Board to take a close look at the Development Regulations Ordinance, or DRO, in this regard, and to adopt additional zoning to help preserve the historic character of our neighborhoods and city as a whole, even if we do not protect historic homes from demolition. Replacing an historic Tudor with a McMansion, as nice as that spec house may be, does a disservice to Summit's past and runs afoul of the spirit of our master plan. Some municipalities, like Milburn, I believe, have an Historic Preservation Commission with the power to prevent property owners from developing their property as they see fit. And I say "property owners" instead of residents, because many are not residents, they're developers. Such bodies are judiciary in nature, with a lawyer, a budget, and significant control over development. Summit has never had an appetite for converting its Historic Preservation Commission, or HPC, into a judiciary body. Our HPC is purely advisory body. It doesn't reject or accept proposals, it merely gives recommendations to the zoning and planning boards to help maintain and enforce standards. For example, when the HPC reviews a zoning application involving the partial demolition and/or addition, it recommends the work be done with an eye towards consistency with the historic nature of the home and/or the neighborhood. The zoning board then will, in its own discretion, use those recommendations in negotiating revisions to a particular application. What happens, though, when a property owner seeks to demolish an historic home? Right now, they fill out a permit application, pay a fee, and can, as soon as 10 days later, demolish that historic home. The owner may not even know that the home has any historic significance. For many years, this hole in Summit's DRO has frustrated the mission of the HPC in accordance with our master plan to minimize and prevent the demolition of designated historic building structures and landmarks where preservation is feasible. For the last 18 months or so, the HPC has worked to create a measure to accomplish two primary objections. One, to slow down demolition, educate property owners, and give our zoning board information about the homes that were when applicants inevitably apply for variances on the homes that will be. And two, to avoid doing so through the creation of any significant additional bureaucracy or diminishing the property rights of our residents. I believe the proposed ordinance accomplishes this, or at least takes a step in the right direction. Simply put, it provides the HPC an opportunity for robust comment where there currently is none by adding a step, the step of an HPC review to the demolition permitting process. Under. Under the proposed ordinance, when a property owner applies for a demolition permit to raise an historically significant property, it will go to the HPC for review. The HPC has seven days to decide whether the referred application warrants an HPC review. If the HPC declines, the city will issue the requested permit as it would for any non-historically significant property. If the HPC opts to issue a report, it must provide its findings and written recommendations within 30 days of the referral to the city and to the property owner. The property owner may then proceed, if he or she so desires, but with the benefit of the HPC's advice, which will remain with the city property file through any zoning applications. I move to introduce this ordinance.
Second.
All right, roll call, please.
Mr. Boyer.
Aye.
Ms. Hamlet.
Aye.
Ms. Cammerson.
Aye.
Mr. Pulaski.
Aye.
Ms. Toth.
Aye.
President McTiernan.
Aye. Motion carries. Just for public, the hearing date for this ordinance is July 29th, 2025.
Thank you, Ms.
Okay. All right, so that concludes our hearing portion and ordinance portion of our meeting. We're moving on to resolutions. I just wanted to say, for our interns, you guys are young, you probably have fun things to do on a Monday night. If, just don't be here on our account. If you do want to take off, feel free. You don't have to. You can hang out with us if you'd like, but feel free to leave if you'd like. All right, now we're on to our resolution section. We have, if you're looking at our packet, quite a few resolutions this evening. So let's get right to it. So first off is safety and health. Councilman Boyer, number one, please.
Thank you, Council President. Just before the interns take off, I just, I just have to say, I was completely impressed. I mean, we got Indiana University, Lafayette, Georgetown, James Madison, Bates College, and Skidmore. I mean, y'all could have went pretty much anywhere else, and you came back to Summit. So, we appreciate that, and like the council president said, the future looks bright. So, thank you. This is resolution ID number 11966, declare the vacancies for the fire department, three. So that is three vacancies. One will be filled by, one is an existing one, and two are the ones that were adopted this year in this year's budget. I move this resolution for adoption.
Second.
All right, do I have any comments from the public at this time on this resolution? All right, comments from council? I'll make a comment then. Yeah, so, no, I'll make, I'll save my comment for the next one. All right, any other comments? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, safety and health, number two, Councilman Boyer.
Thank you once again, Council President. This is ID number 11967, to appoint two probationary firefighters, which those positions were adopted this year in this year's budget. One is Timothy Digney, and the other is Mike Tomich. These two probationary firefighters were interviewed by the safety committee. They are excellent young men, and this actually depletes our volunteer waitlist. So, the fire department needs to go out and get more young volunteers. So, they wasted no time. The chief has been waiting a long time to get two additional positions, and happy to say that this council was able to do that. So I move this for adoption.
Second.
Comments from the public? Comments from council? Councilman Pulaski.
Yeah, I would just echo Councilman Boyer. I am very happy that we're able to add these positions. Chief Evers has been patiently asking for it for years now, so I'm glad that we're able to do it for him.
Other comments from council? Yep, my one comment is, I know he's, he has been asking for a long, long time, and I know for a long, long time I've been one of the people who've kind of said, maybe next year. So next year's finally arrived for Chief Evers. Look, these guys do an amazing job. A lot of people think firefighters, and they just think, oh, when there's a fire. But they're out on Route 78 with accidents, they respond to gas leaks, all sorts of things. And their call volume certainly warrants looking and, and, you know, request, or I guess responding to their request that's been made, kind of on a good faith basis for year in and year out. Every time we add a person, we talked about this with our police force, it's a big commitment the city's making. It's a big commitment for insurance, for healthcare, it's a big, for pension, and so it's not just a salary. So, I know we've, we've talked about this a lot in finance, do we plan properly for this? Because it's not just going to affect this year's coming up budget, it's going to affect next year, and hopefully, these people are with us for a long, long time. So, quite a few years in the future. So, we don't make these decisions lightly about adding people. You do have to be really, really diligent on, you know, adding up all the numbers, and I'm happy that we did this, and we have looked at the numbers, and we can fit them in. And so I'm happy to support this resolution. So, all right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, on to community programs and service, and parking services. Councilman Pulaski.
Thank you. This is resolution ID number 1197, to appoint community programs advisory board member. Pending our closed session discussion, I'm happy to announce the mayor's appointment of Mike Dugan to that advisory, community programs advisory board. Mike was born and raised in Summit, graduated from Summit High School in 2005, where he excelled at lacrosse, going on to play at Rutgers. He's an expert on Summit youth sports, having played and or coached them the majority of his years on this earth. Michael make a fine addition, and I move to adopt this resolution.
Second. Do I have any comments from the public? Comments from council? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, moving on, we have a law and labor resolution this evening. Councilman Pulaski.
Thank you. This is resolution ID number 1192, authorize execution of a sidebar agreement to our current contract with the Teamsters Local 469. Pending our closed session discussion, I move to adopt this resolution. But first, I will, I'll just note, it has to do with the change of a title. Current title of Senior Transfer Station Operator is being changed to Senior Operator, and specifically, the title, the current title was too restrictive, suggesting that only those at the trans, working at the transfer station are eligible to apply for this position ultimately. So changing the name or the title to Senior Operator solves the problem. So I again move to adopt this resolution.
Second.
Comments from the public? Comments from council? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, got a lot from capital projects and community services this evening. Hope you're ready, Councilwoman Hamlet. Let you start with number one.
Thank you, Council President. Yes, bear with me, this is one of, I think, 11. The first one is Capital Projects, ID 11899. This is a resolution of the City of Summit, County of Union, authorizing the mayor to execute the memorandum of understanding between the City of Summit, the United Methodist Church of Summit, and Bergen County United Way for the creation of affordable senior rental units. Whereas the church approached the city to inquire if its former education building located at 17 Kent Place Boulevard, City of Summit, Block 1911, Lot 5, which is now underutilized, could be repurposed for a small, 100% affordable senior rental project. And whereas, after the meeting with the city, the church began working with Bergen County United Way to determine whether their building, their education building could be adapted and renovated for that purpose. And Bergen County United Way has determined that a project of up to 12 senior rental units could be created out of that building. Whereas the city is supportive of the creation of affordable senior rental units that this proposed project will create, allowing very low and moderate income seniors to live in Summit with walkable access to the downtown train station. I would like to move this resolution.
Second.
Comments from the public? Comments from council? Councilman Boyer.
I, you know, real quick, Council President, I just want to say that the United Methodist Church stepped up, and this is, this is excellent. This is, they had the land, their permissioners got together, and they decided to put their best foot forward and say, hey, let's help with affordable housing. I mean, this is how you do it. It doesn't necessarily always have to fall on the government, which seems to be the case these days. People, residents, get together and they make a change. And as you can see with the partnership with the city, we help out. And, I mean, this is a perfect example of how to make these things work. So, I really like seeing this. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Other comments? Councilwoman Hamlet.
I would like to agree with Councilman Boyer. This is exciting. This is something that the entire community should be proud of. This is 100% affordable project, 12 units walk to town, and I'm just really proud of everybody for working so hard. Mayor, thank you for facilitating, and Bergen County United Way, I think this is really good stuff, and I'm proud of the leadership and the community for getting this done. This is a very old church, and I know that some of these churches now are underfunded, so it's a win-win for everybody, and just great, great stuff, so thank you.
Thank you. Madam Mayor.
I just want to point out that the pastor, Laura, has been phenomenal. I'm super grateful to her and to her board trustees. They've been fantastic through this process, and they're really excited about it, and I think we should be, as a community, be very grateful.
Agreed. Other comments from council? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, Capital Projects, number two, Councilman, Councilwoman Hamlet.
Thank you, Council President. This is resolution ID 11994. I just want to give a brief explanation before I go down and explain this resolution. This is for Maybe Playground, and we're going to reject the bids. There were seven bids that came in over budget, but I wanted to give a little bit of background. One of the reasons that these numbers are a little bit higher, and if we have further questions, David can come up here and give an explanation, are because when we took money from the Jake's Law Grant and Green Acres, there were, there were several different requirements that increased those costs. So for example, there had to be 20% shade for the project, there had to be X number of trees for shade, there had to be certain drainage requirements. So there was, along with grants and great things, come also some requirements which, which made those costs go a little bit higher. So, we've been looking at this for, geez, the last couple of years, but specifically today, our priority is to get this, this playground done as soon as possible, so. And I will move on with the resolution. So this is resolution ID 11994, reject bids and authorize a new bid advertisement, Maybe Playground Improvements, whereas seven bids were received by the purchasing agent for the 2025 Maybe Playground Improvements on Tuesday, May 13th, 2025, whereas the lowest bid substantially exceeds the city's appropriation for the improvements, and whereas the Director of Department of Community Services requests permission to re-advertise for 2025 Maybe Playground Improvements. I would like to move this resolution.
Second.
Comments from the public? Comments from council?
Just one comment, I guess, Mike. Just for matters of, in order to educate the public, once we go out to bid again, if we again get bids that are higher, we can then negotiate with those contractors. So, for this bid specifically, we're going to, Director Schager, I'm going to put you on the spot, what's the word for, we're going to take out some of those and bid them separately, right?
Yes, through you, Council President, we're going to make alternate bids.
Alternate bids. We're going to make alternate bids, so, yeah. I think that was it.
Great. I just, I have one question. Just sort of the public, how much did we get for grants for this project?
David, do you want to, I don't have it off the top. I had 750 for Jake's Law, and then, go ahead, David, you can.
Yeah, Mr. Weida.
Through you, Council President. So we did have $750,000 from the Jake's Law Grant. There was also another $175,000 from local reimbursement grants. So that's the money that is being referred to as not on hand, so we can't certify the funds. And to Council Member Hamlet's point, the reason why they're being done as alternates is once we receive the funding from the reimbursement, we'll then be able to go back and do these pieces. So it's not necessarily that we don't have the funding secured, we just don't have the cash on hand. So doing this in a more phased, phased way will allow us to get the project done completely.
Very good. Okay, thank you. Other comments or questions from council? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, Capital Projects, number three, Councilwoman Hamlet.
Thank you, Council President. I will have Director Schager just give a brief background of this as well. It's a complicated one. Resolution 11979, whereas the DCS Director, City Engineer, has advised that on Friday, May 17th, pump number one at the Constantine Pump Station failed, and whereas without both pumps and operational, an increased flow event could result in sewage overflow, creating a health and safety hazard. Whereas pursuant to NJSA 40A 11-6 and corresponding rules, the DCS Director, City Engineer, requests authorization for an emergency contract to PCS Pump and Process Inc. in an amount estimated not to exceed $90,000, which is in excess of the city's $44,000 bid threshold. I would like to move this resolution, but I would ask that Director Schager just give a quick history of what happened on that day to cause that pump failure.
Yes, through you, Council President.
Let's just do the motion in a second, first.
Oh, yeah, do I have a?
Second.
Okay, thank you. Yes.
Yes, first, when your sewer operator calls you at 6:30 in the morning, it's never to say hello. I wish it was, but on that Friday, our Constantine Pump Station did fill up with 12 feet of sewage. The result was one of our pumps had a catastrophic failure, which we believe was a result of a seal that failed, and then those massive pumps, they just get a little bit out of plumb, will cause the impeller to essentially snap, and then it shut down the facility. We declared an emergency later that day, which allowed us to actually already proceed with the ordering, because these, like most mechanical parts nowadays, are about a 22-week lead time, so we are in the queue already. And now we're just doing the contract to formally approve the contract that we need to get the pump. So, I mean, once it's in, we do, you know, accidentally wind up with a new pump for, you know, aging station, but our sewer operator is able to install it, so this should be the only cost relative to the emergency.
Thank you. All right, any comments from the public? Comments from council?
Council President.
Yes, Councilman Boyer.
Director Schager, just to be clear, because I know the public is, is hearing sewage overflow, the backup pump did work, and there was no sewage that was mixed in with our, or stream water, or, you know, and no one has to worry about turning the water in the kitchen and not smelling so good. So, can you talk about that real quick, please?
Yes, through, through you, Council President, again. Though the station did shut down fully, because at that point, the surge of the sewage, you know, the station had to be isolated before the other pump could be utilized, and then obviously cleaned. But the Constantine Pump Station does have a built-in overflow, so when the station does reach capacity, it then goes down passaic to our Chatham Road Pump Station. So, not that you want to have emergencies ever, but if you were to have a pump failure, you want to have it at Constantine, because then we don't wind up discharging somewhere, we don't impact the sewage system, other than sending it down the road a little further.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Council President. Just so the residents know, we got backup, you know? Stuff fails, but, you know, our, our city engineer, you know, we got backup for stuff when it fails, so we're fortunate to be, to be a city like this, so.
And in this case, the station was probably down for, for less than half a day, that we could just clean it out and then just put the one pump on, because right now it's functioning with just the one pump, so.
And Director Schager, how old was the pump that failed?
Between 30 and 40 years, so.
Wow.
But you can get good life out of them if you maintain them, which we do, but just sometimes this, this happens.
Yeah, it's an old pump.
Council President.
Yes, Councilwoman Hamlet.
Director Schager, I remember the day you called me about this, and other than being exacerbated, it was.
exacerbated, it was a stressful situation. I think you handled it really well, so I just want to say thank you. But correct me if I'm wrong, we had a ton of water that day, didn't we? A ton of rain that day?
I don't recall, just because this spring has always been raining, so it's all kind of just bled together.
Yeah, I couldn't remember, but I.
But there was rain that week, there was rain around then, but yes.
Yeah, it was a big, it was a pretty bad day that day, so thank you for being on top of that.
Other comments from council? Yes, Councilwoman Pulowski.
It's more of a question for Director Schager. My understanding that some municipalities have privatized their sewer utility, I guess, and some have gotten pretty big payouts initially, and it results usually, though, in increasing the annual bill to residents. I was wondering if you know whether these have been successes, towns that have done it, and whether you've ever put together maybe like pros and cons of doing this, or if that's something that we should consider, so that we're not, you know, considering $90,000 repairs. It might not be, you know, a cost feasible measure for the city, but maybe it is, so I was wondering if you could hum a few bars on that, if you know.
Yes, again, through you, Council President. About every half decade, typically in this area, it's New Jersey American Water that would make the approach about, you know, acquiring the city's sewer utility. And it has been explored in the past. In the past, when they generally see our sewer rates so low, what will happen is, one, those will go up rather quickly, but two, they will probably give a lower offer, just because they know they're going to have to make it up somewhere else as they slowly raise the rates. So, when we have explored it in the past, it never went too far, because we do have a very low fee. But it is something that they've come back around recently, so we will, you know, meet with them and just share our information. In terms of success, there's definitely some, it's a function of how you maintain your infrastructure, and ours is generally pretty good. It is older. I mean, there's parts that are still 100 years old, the pipes. So, some towns that do have a massive success is basically, they've almost gone too far down with their infrastructure, that it almost makes sense just to walk away and let someone else take over it. There are some that have not been happy with it, so I'd say it's 50/50, so it's kind of, you know, it's not one size fits all, it would be up to the specific municipality, but it is something that we have had contact with them recently, and when we kind of get some free moments, we'll get them information and see if it goes somewhere.
Thank you.
So, follow-up question. Has any town in the joint meeting ever done this? Gone to sell their, their, what?
Not that I'm aware of, but that is a good question and something we could poke around.
I know as of five or six years ago, there were none.
I can check at the meeting.
Yeah, I don't think they have, but have any explored it, you know, other than just a fleeting thought, so that's something we could ask through Councilmember Hamlet even there, but I'm not aware of it, so. But I know big ones like Hoboken has, like they switched over at some point. And you'll read in Municipalities Magazine, there's a couple in the Gloucester County region that have, and it seemed to be a pretty big windfall for them, but other towns, not so much, so.
Yeah, just for the public, we are a, one of, is it 13 municipalities?
Yes.
One of 13 municipalities that own equity in our sewer system. So, we're, we receive stuff from New Providence, but we're pretty much one end of it, and then the proverbial flows downhill and ends up down, right near the Gothles Bridge, that's our sewage treatment plant, right there, as the Passaic enters into the bay there. This has been around for over about 100 years, I think. You couldn't recreate this today. Elizabeth was having financial problems while this was being built, and so they became a customer of the joint meeting. And I know there's been many times where they've tried to buy in, because they're also the largest customer of the joint meeting, Elizabeth's a big city, and they just can't afford it. Because the infrastructure and the plant is so well-run, it's one reason, as Director Schager alluded to, our sewage rates are so low. It's a phenomenal system, it's really, really well-maintained. I can see why people would like to buy it, probably not at the price we'd be willing to sell it for, I would think. But again, I think it's worth always talking to people.
Council President.
Yes.
And also, the council member that serves on this board gets paid, right? Now, yes, right, and, and, and but, but it was, it was City Administrator Baldwin's great-great-great-grandfather that made it so that any sitting council person will never get a dime for anything that they do. This is, this is, this council has the highest integrity in Summit. So, that money that the council member gets, they have to donate it to charity.
That's right.
That is true.
God bless.
Okay. Other, other comments from council? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, Capital Projects, number four, Councilwoman Hamlet.
We're only on four, okay. So, this is Resolution ID 11813. Before I go on, I just want to give a quick description of the Salt Brook area, because a lot of people are asking exactly where is the Salt Brook, so I just want to be very specific. The Salt Brook serves as a large drainage tributary that is centrally located within the city. The drainage area is predominantly a system of underground pipes until it becomes an open channel in front of the Cornog Building at Memorial Field. It then enters a culvert where it flows under Brayton School and discharges to an open stream at Ashland Road, where it flows north towards Springfield Avenue before heading west, where it leaves the city at Division Avenue, as it travels towards the Passaic River, where it ultimately discharges. Over time, the volume and flow of water has caused erosion to the stream banks, which has resulted in property loss as the stream meanders and deposits sediment. In some areas, headwalls from various streets have been impacted due to erosion, causing them to fail or topple over fully, which further exacerbates the erosion and condition of the stream. One area at the rear of 722 Springfield, 72722, and a few other areas right around there, have suffered more severe erosion as their storm, as the county's pipe has toppled over. The county is not able to repair the pipe until the banks are stabilized, but have agreed to do so if a project is undertaken. So, I wanted to give a little bit of history in regards to where the Salt Brook is. So, this is Resolution ID 11813, which is supporting Stream Bank Stabilization Project, Salt Brook, Salt Brook. Whereas the Salt Brook serves as a large drainage tributary that is centrally located within the city, and I just mentioned everything else, so I'm going to skip all of that. Capital Projects and Community Services has advised that any project to address the entire stream is a major task that is well beyond the ability for one property owner to take on, and CAPS has recommended the city implement various strategies to address the ongoing conditions associated with the Salt Brook in an effort to protect property in the city and the health and safety of city residents. Whereas, it has been determined by the common council that it is in the best interest of the residents and property owners of the city to implement the strategies recommended by CAPS. I would like to move this resolution.
Second.
All right, comments from the public?
Good evening. Adriana Allerpon, Springfield Avenue. Great step forward that the stabilization of Salt Brook is on tonight's agenda, thank you. I want to begin by thanking you all for acknowledging this issue, and I sincerely hope that the town continues to monitor a major contributor to this, the ongoing overdevelopment that is negatively impacting Summit's land and properties. Last year, I paved my driveway. It's a shared space with my neighbor. We carefully coordinated our plans and applied for permits together. To our surprise, my neighbor's application was denied due to what was described as excess pavement coverage, even though the existing pavement had been there for over 100 years. As a result, my neighbor was not allowed to repave their half. Meanwhile, across the street at 609 Springfield Avenue, a large lot formerly mostly green space was torn down and replaced by two larger homes with garages and extensive paving, with virtually no green space left. This overdevelopment has dramatically increased runoff, which is either pouring into the drain, further overwhelming the Broken County Pipe that I've reported many times, or flowing directly into Salt Brook, both accelerating erosion. To make matters worse, there's now a natural runoff channel that has formed. It's cut through the land, exposing the underlying rock. I've sent video evidence to the council. The heavy rainfall over the last few months has worsened the land loss and destabilization, not only on my property, but extending further along the brook in both directions. The infrastructure neglect combined with overdevelopment is a dangerous mix. This stabilization plan must move forward immediately, along with a long-term strategy to manage runoff and enforce balanced development. I'm grateful to see action starting. My neighbors and I are willing to help. I've already attempted to assist through forwarding information for capable contractors willing to take on the project, one local and another one that has experience working with Union County. All I have to offer is my help and my hope that something is done before it's too late. Thank you. I'll email this.
Thank you. Other comments?
Hi, Chantal Landman, Beekman Road. I want to address this resolution, which proposes the city allocate taxpayer dollars and city resources to fix damage caused by the Salt Brook on a single property, an issue that is both incredibly unfortunate and reflects a much larger problem that affects many residents. When one resident experiences damage, especially from flooding or shifting terrain, it often signals a broader systemic issue. Whether it's faulty infrastructure or inadequate storm-water management, these are not one-home problems. Fixing the issue on one property may bring temporary, hopefully, temporary relief to that home, but it won't address the root cause. Instead, we should take this issue as a wake-up call. Our infrastructure needs a comprehensive upgrade. Residents deserve transparency. What is the plan to fix the underlying issue, and what will that cost? Certainly a lot more than $50,000. Have Union County, federal, and state agencies agreed to coordinate with us on the work outlined in the resolution, including the comprehensive project outlined? If they have not, and we act too narrowly, as we've heard from our engineers, we risk wasting money on Band-Aids and patchwork solutions while the larger problem persists or worsens. Even more concerning, this resolution sets a precedent that could become financially unsustainable for the city. Is the city negligent and/or contributing to the damage? Will future requests from homeowners receive the same level of intervention? Residents from Linden Place and Tulip Street have come to council over the years to raise concerns about the Salt Brook flooding and property damage. And over the past couple of months, I'm hearing from residents along the Salt Brook and elsewhere in the city, asking if these city-funded repairs are common, and wondering how they can avail themselves of similar funding and DPW resources. The city budget simply cannot support this model, nor is it an appropriate or effective use of our taxpayer dollars. I feel for this family on Springfield, we all do. I have compassion for what they are going through. Let's be comprehensive and strategic and work on solving the actual problem, not just the symptom, and let's do that now, so that no other families along the Salt Brook have this experience in the future. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Just email your comments to the clerk. Thank you. Other comments from the public?
Hi. Lisa Allen, 27 Plain Street. Thank you, Council President, through you. I just actually had a quick question. One of the residents, Adriana, had stated that there were two homes that were built across the street, and my question would be through you for zoning, for Director Schager, as part of that bigger plan, was there any storm-water management considerations? So, when the houses went up, we know that the storm-water drain is right across the street, and the pipe that's owned by the county is falling apart. So, potentially, was there any consideration for that? And I just want to say that in terms of symptoms and flooding and issues like that, I do feel as though the symptom is overdevelopment. And I think we all, it's like this unstated thing, I mean, we're kind of stating it most of the time, but we're not really saying truly that, as a community, we really need to start thinking about, how does overdevelopment affect our community? Because there's more rain, there's more extreme weather, and if our storm-water drains can't handle all the water that's being produced, and we just keep adding homes, our sewage can't handle it, it's constantly, this is actually the third time, I think, that Constantine, I could be wrong, but I feel like it's the sewer, this is the third time over several years that it has failed. And so, it was just interesting, Councilwoman Hamlet, that you had asked if it was because of the rain, so I'm just curious about the stormwater, and just wanted to say that overdevelopment is a huge concern.
Thank you. Other comments from the public? All right, comments from council? Councilwoman Pulowski.
So, I agree. Development and overdevelopment is a big problem. And to put it simply, when we, you know, continue to overdevelop, build bigger houses than the town was designed for, we're adding roof area and we're losing permeable ground. The result is more and more and more water goes into our storm sewage system, and it overtaxes our storm sewers, and, you know, one of the results has been the deterioration of the Salt Brook. Now, if you go down to the Salt Brook and walk up and down it, you can see on both sides of it, you know, the roots for all these trees and fallen trees. The brook itself is washing away land, and something absolutely has to be done about that. I think that's more of an Army Corps of Engineer, state, county issue, but what's happening at the residents that we're talking about tonight is the result of a broken county pipe. And that pipe keeps breaking more and more, and every time it breaks, the surges of storm water that come through it break away land, and then, when the, when the, when the Salt Brook overflows, which, and I've talked to many residents who live on the Salt Brook, and they have confirmed that over the past 30 years, the levels continue to rise, more and more of this dirt washes away. Now, the particular residence that we're talking about here has lost 50 out of 75 feet of their backyard, something like that, and, you know, the county is refusing to fix their pipe until we stabilize the land. And, you know, if we don't, you know, in 10 years, her house will be in there, and then it'll be Springfield Ave. But even once we do stabilize it, she's not going to get most of her property back, and that's a shame, and that breaks our hearts. But we do have to, and I don't know if I'd call this a Band-Aid, I think I'd call it a tourniquet. We have to stop this now, and then we also do have to do something as we continue to develop, and there are other big developments proposed for that side of the street, and that's where the storm water goes. It goes right into the Salt Brook, instead of into the ground where most of it's going now. So, I support this, and I just wish we could have done it sooner.
Councilwoman Hamlet.
Thank you, Council President. I would say that this is something none of us take lightly. I'm sure the headlines tomorrow will be that the city council is helping an individual property owner. The good news is, we have an excellent city solicitor who always seems to lead us in the right direction, and the legal advice as well that we've been given as a council. Some may argue that Salt Brook stabilization is about fixing private property, but New Jersey law, especially the Supreme Court's decision in Posey versus Boardentown Sewage Authority, makes it very clear that if a dangerous condition starts on public land, or with, as we can see in this case, the storm pipe from the county, makes a dangerous condition starts on public land and foreseeably harms private property, the city can still be held liable. In other words, we can't ignore erosion or collapse just because it crosses a property line. If we know that municipal stream banks are failing and doing nothing leads to damage, that's a legal risk that we have to take on. It's smart stewardship, and it's good risk mitigation. I would further say, Director Schager, you can educate the public a little bit on the other aspects of what we're about to fix with the culvert, so the county is fixing a few things, and then we're potentially fixing a few more things, and we're obviously in discussion with the state and DEP and everybody else around this.
Yes, through you, Council President. So, I don't recall if it was a year or two years ago, but there was two unowned parcels of land between Tulip, I'm sorry, it goes alongside Tulip, but it starts at Ashland and goes to Linden and Oakland, which the city did, I'll use the word inherit, but it was just basically when it's a defunct owner, we took ownership of those properties, which essentially just, the only thing on the property is the Salt Brook. So, in that area itself, we do, we are currently permitting just to get those, get desnagged to repair the walls that are in there, just to basically. to repair the walls that are in there, just to basically extend the life of the culvert and the Salt Brook in that location for the first two blocks. So that is being looked at right now. Otherwise downstream, you know, we do have plans at the Division Avenue Bridge, which is more just to stop trash from, well, it's trash rack, but it's really just to stop some of the vegetative debris that winds up down there after a storm. So we do have that permitted. We're working with the county. Otherwise, the property up along the stream, we only have one small parcel, which we've removed some trees from, but that is all we've done there.
Thank you. Other comments?
Council President?
Yes. Councilman Boyer?
So I don't know if folks understand the magnitude of this, but let me give an illustration. If it was fourth and goal, I'd kick a field goal. That's how much land Mrs. Alakon's loss. I mean, it is, it is dramatic and it is scary. However, as much as I feel for the resident, and yeah, you know what? I'm concerned about residents. I am. I'm actually elected to represent them. And by doing so, I'm also here to represent the city and make sure that the city doesn't have liability. Now, when we talk about the stream and this issue, this issue was here three years ago. I mean, I remember when I was running for council and I came up here and I was saying the same thing to the council members up here, and nothing happened. And even years before that, I'm hearing the stories about how this was an issue. And this is when the resident had 20 more yards in her backyard, right? And now it's like at a point where something's going to happen. And I don't want to be the one sitting up here talking about, man, we should have did something when the, when the house falls in the creek. Who wants to, who wants to be sitting up there explaining that? Now, as much as I care about Adriana and her family and the backyard, this is not about that. When we talk about the county pipe, people are saying, a pipe? There is no pipe there. We're talking about a pipe that doesn't exist at all. It's upstream. It's like 20 yards upstream. It's not even there. So the water just comes out and it just floods. And actually, the last storm, I seen a video, it creates a swirl. I mean, it had to be like five feet, right? So imagine a little kid, and kids play in that Salt Brook. I grew up here. I used to play in the Salt Brook, right? Imagine a little kid gets swept away in a storm or something like that. Then we'd be up here talking about a different story. While the city is not currently liable under Tort Claims Act, it risks liability if its infrastructure contributes to ongoing damage. If we knowingly ignore a danger or if it blocks necessary repairs, which, which if we don't pass this, could, because the county is saying, we're not going to fix the pipe until you stabilize that area. So I know people will say, yeah, we're concerned about the resident's property. It has nothing to do with that, actually. It has something to do with the liability that the city will incur if we block the necessary repairs that need to happen, which is the county pipe. This is our responsibility to protect the city. And we shouldn't make anything else about that, because if it is, it's politics. Let's not always be political. This is something that we need to do. And I've been raising a flag about this for almost two years now, let's say three, almost. And again, I don't want to be up here talking about, man, we should have did something when the house falls into the creek. Man, we should have did something when the kid drowns. That's not the conversations that I want to have for $50,000. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Other comments?
Just very briefly?
Yes, Councilwoman Toth?
Thank you, Council President. I am very concerned about the optics of looking like we're doing something for one resident, but because of the potential liability, I feel compelled to support this resolution.
Thank you. Other comments? Councilwoman Hamlet?
Would it be okay to have our city solicitor just opine on this topic briefly?
If you'd like to, sure.
Would you mind just talking a little bit about the city's liability?
Well, there's an easement that runs across this property. Oh, I'm sorry. There's an easement that runs across this property that the county has a pipe. The pipe takes runoff from county roads that you have to get that water off the road to make sure that the roadways are safe. If water accumulates on roads, you can either have ponding, which is dangerous for cars, or even more dangerous in the winter, ice. It's dangerous for pedestrians and automotives. So the pipe, which is taking water runoff off the roadways into the Salt Brook, that has to be repaired. The only way you can repair it is by stabilizing this one portion of the bank where the pipe runs into. So what the city is doing in conjunction with the county is to repair a current county pipe easement that takes runoff off of city property that all residents and visitors enjoy. So to do nothing puts the city and the county in harm's way, because we have to get the water off of it into a stream that then dumps into a river. So it's our recommendation that you guys do go forward, working with the county, to merely stabilize it. The actual repair of the pipe, that's the county's responsibility.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments?
Council President, real quick?
Yes, Councilman Boyer?
Councilwoman Hamlet, just so that everybody knows, and maybe you can do this a couple of meetings from now, we need to stabilize the entire Salt Brook. I mean, we've had conversations even a year ago with, you know, New Providence, with our congressman, I mean, with the Army Corps of Engineers. It's not like we're just focused on this one area, right? This is, this is, this is a long, you know, process, which we know that, you know, we need to get involved in, right?
I think, Director Schreger, can you tell us the last time when our watersheds were surveyed? It had to have been, how long ago? Probably over 50 something?
Through you, Council President. So we have, I mean, just, just to kind of shed light on the Salt Brook is, the drainage area is approximately one square mile, which means basically one-sixth of the city does convey its storm water through there. So we have some idea and concept that we've drawn up of what the watersheds actually are. And in this case, it is, you know, serving as a system for the city's storm water runoff, which is why it is generally, you know, a fast-hitting event that happens there. I mean, people who live in the Salt Brook will tell you, it comes up very quickly. If you go the next day, it's right back to being a trickle. Unlike, you know, Passaic and Rockaway Rivers where it's, you know, 12 hours, 24 hours later that it hits peak, this basically hits peak as the peak rain is hitting, and then it goes down very quickly. As a result, though, you have a high velocity, which does result in, you're more prone to erosion and bank impact. So that's just kind of sums up the watershed that this is in. So it is, it is a large watershed. It's the city's largest that does go to the stream. We have pursued, you know, Army Corps has been out. Unfortunately, with the Army Corps, is it work they do? Absolutely. Is it work they'd be excited to do? Absolutely. You're competing with 50 other states, as well as our territories, where the problems might be more significant or impact lives and houses more readily or more quickly. So nothing has trickled down from there, but we do reach out when we can, and they have been out when they can. So that's kind of the challenges that we are up against.
Thank you. Other comments? My only big comment on this would be, you know, I do share concerns and optics around, as sad it is, and I went and saw the backyard of Mrs. Alakon's, and it's disturbing. It's a lot of erosion. But I do think, you know, it's a slippery slope, one that I don't think the city should go down around, you know, fixing erosion problems on private property. This is different, though. It just is. There is a county pipe. This is about, this is about public infrastructure. That's why this is different. The county can't do anything, and as our attorney pointed out, that pipe services, you know, water runoff for public roads, the entire area. If that, if we can't get the bank stabilized, they can't do that work. That's why this is different. This is an investment in public infrastructure. It's not an investment, as much as I'd love to help out private residents with erosion, it's not an investment in, in private property erosion mitigation. That is not the city's business. City's business is to facilitate public infrastructure improvements and such, and, and that's why I, I do support this. We need to do that. I think the benefit of it will be to help that poor resident, because it is sad to see all that, that erosion happen. And no one, it's horrible to go through when you own your property and that happens. But, so there's a, there's a huge benefit from that, but we do have to make sure that we're focused on our infrastructure and this does do that. So I do support the resolution. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Next, Capitol Projects Resolution Number Five, Councilwoman Hamlet.
Sure, we're going to have Councilman Boyer do this one. Right, Jamal?
I wasn't prepared.
Oh, sorry. I thought you were going to do it.
Three and one, and you know, I, no, I'm just.
No, I can do it. I thought you wanted to do it.
No, it's all right.
We were initially going to take it off, but now we've found that we can change it, so.
Well, do me a favor. Why don't you, why don't you read it? Because I want to make an amendment.
Okay. Fair enough. Okay. Resolution ID 11962, whereas in a memo, in a memo made 29/2025, the Director of Division of Engineering and Public Works states that, "Due to the success of the original dog park, which was established in 2022, at the transportation, the city is exploring the possibility of installing permanent dog parks at other locations, which could offer residents in other parts of town easier access and longer hours. Whereas the director recommends setting up temporary dog parks at Memorial Field near the parking lot by the tennis courts on July 11th and 12th, 2025, and at the southeast quadrant of the Village Green on July 25th and 26th, 2025, to evaluate public interest in the same. Whereas the director will seek feedback from users of the temporary dog parks to assist in determining future decisions." I would like to move this resolution, and then we're going to amend it.
Council President?
I need a second first.
Do I second before I motion?
Yes.
Second?
Thank you. Okay. Do you want to make a motion now?
Yes.
Okay.
Council President, I move to amend the resolution. And just to explain, take it into consideration of Councilman Smallwood, who, who said, you know what? I, I support this. However, having it 48 hours is just such a short period of time. And also, I don't necessarily agree with where was going to be placed in the Village Green or in Memorial Field. So I, this is where this amendment or move, motion to amend comes from. So I move to amend the resolution to modify the event duration and location details so that the event may be held for up to two weeks with a designated location to be determined at Memorial Field and the Village Green. The original fixed dates and locations was July 11th, 12th, 2025 at Memorial Field near the parking lot by the tennis court and July 25th through the 26th, 2025 at the southeast quadrant of the Village Green. Would be replacing that accordingly. So just to recap, I'm making a motion to amend the resolution to modify the event duration and location details so that it's up to two weeks and with a designated location to be determined at Memorial Field and the Village Green.
I second your motion to extend the time and allow for greater flexibility in the specific location at those two general locations.
The only thing I would say is, is it the director who will make the determination for where these things would end up?
Well, I, I think we say the director because our city engineer is, you know, the SME of it. But I think the council would like to put their two cents in here to say, hey, we, we think this spot may be good or not. Now, Council President, are you alluding to the fact that we should say that the director will work with council officials to determine a designation or?
Well, I think the public should know where, how these decisions are being made, right? I mean, right now, the public knows these were, where they would be. We're not going to, we're not going to have another meeting about this just to talk about where these go, right? I mean, I think if it would, to say that the director, working with the CAPS Committee, will, you know, determine the location.
That, that works.
Councilwoman Hamlet?
No, I was just going to say, just to clarify, we identified the time issue in committee, but we didn't have time to change it by the time the public packet was, came out. So we quickly identified that one day would not be nearly enough to engage with public feedback. So it's going to be a lot better to give feedback for a couple of weeks.
All right. So I think what we'll vote on is just this motion to amend the resolution, and then we would vote on whether to adopt it. Is that right?
Yes.
Madam Clerk? Okay. So all in favor of amending the resolution?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. So we're going to, okay, so now I'm going to ask the public, do you have any comments you'd like to make on the amended resolution? All right. Counsel, comments on the amended resolution? Councilman Boyer?
Just, so Summit is a pet-friendly town. I mean, this may be anecdotal, but like 80% of people in Summit have dogs or a cat. This is a no-brainer. And the master plan calls for our Village Green to be a place where we commune, where we get together. What better area to walk your dog and get a cup of coffee and sit on a bench and talk to your neighbors while your kids are playing in the playground? This is Summit here. This will bring people to our town for our local businesses. And, I mean, this, this is such a great, great thing for this town. And, you know, I support this wholeheartedly, and hopefully we can get the dog waste dispensers going up at some point, too. The mayor's probably laughing at me right now. But yeah, this is, I, I think this is a great thing for our residents to get together and meet each other and meet people you've never spoken to before, because who doesn't like talking about what kind of dog you got? What kind of dog is that? Right? Like, yeah, you know? So, yes. Thank you, Council President.
Other comments from counsel? Councilman Pulowski?
Thank you. Right now, we have a dog park down at the dump. And it's a great dog park, and there's never anybody there. I really only ever get to go on Saturdays, because it opens too late to go before work during the week, and it closes too early to go after work during the week, and it's not open on Sundays. So I don't know if we can spare the space in the middle of town, but I think this is a great idea to give it a shot. You know, another spot that I've been eyeing for a dog park is by the train station where that gigantic hunk of metal is. Forgive me if anybody loves that piece of art, but I'm ready to get rid of it and put a dog park right there. So I'm looking forward to seeing how this works out.
Other comments? Madam Mayor?
I would just, would just like to make sure that when this happens, that we get feedback. So public, residents who use the dog park, please let us know how you like it. So, public, residents who use the dog park, please let us know how you like it and definitely try both locations so you can weigh in on which one's better.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I would just say similarly, I think extending the time from two days up to a couple of weeks, you need data. These are pop-ups for a reason. They're doesn't, they're not supposed to be permanent. If people love them and they work out and I'm sure there might be some people concerned with animals on the green and such like that, we'll, we'll, we'll see. That's why you do a, you do it for a little bit.
Yeah.
Um, it, but in addition, I think, um, one, my wife does use the dog park at the dump. She, she really likes it with her, we have two dogs. Um, so that's one thing. And secondly, the Memorial Field one, there's kind of an informal dog, doggy playdate there every morning already. So, uh, I think it, this will be nice, uh, nice thing for the people around there as well. Um, so yeah, I'm all for it. Councilwoman Toth?
Thank you, Council President. Um, we are all dog lovers here and dog, as we've noted, dog parks allow for great community engagement. However, I don't think they're appropriate everywhere and specifically I'm concerned about dog parks close to playgrounds where there are young children who are often afraid of dogs. Um, our existing dog park was located at the transfer station specifically so that it didn't interfere with other recreational activities. Um, we have other places in town that fit those characteristics. I'm thinking of the four vacant lots, um, at the city-owned lots at the corner of Oakley and Springfield Avenue, where there's woods, there's paths. Um, and so I think that if we want to test pop-up dog parks, we should seek out locations that aren't really close to very young children. Um, and so I support the concept, but I don't think that I can support this resolution as it's currently drafted and amended.
Thank you. Councilwoman Hamlet?
Um, the only thing I would mention there, uh, Councilmember Toth, is that location is right next to a school on, uh, the playground is right near a school where you're suggesting.
Yeah, I, I guess that had occurred to me when it was only a two-day.
Oh, right. Okay. So, okay.
Other comments?
And Council President?
Yes, Councilman Boyer?
I, I can a hundred percent agree and assert that, um, at the city dump, there are no other recreational things happening there. So you're absolutely right, Councilwoman Toth.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay. Motion carries. All right. Capitol Projects, Number Six, Councilwoman Hamlet?
Thank you, Council President. I'm gonna ask to bundle 11933, 11932, 11931, 11930 and ask Director Schreger to give a brief. Um, today we spent a lot of time going over these projects and he did it with his computer and I thought it would be really helpful for the public, uh, to hear it from him rather than me reading for resolutions. So, uh, would that be okay, Council President?
Yeah, just, uh, so for the public, these are all, uh, about, uh, submission for grant applications. Is that correct?
Correct. Yes.
Yeah. So, Director Schreger?
Thank you through you, Council President. So the state of New Jersey through NJDOT does solicit grant applications at this time. They're all due July 1st. Unfortunately, our council meeting is July 1st, so we have to do them at this meeting to get the resolutions for the projects we want. Uh, it is not just a carte blanche sort of wish list that you can pick. They have to be projects that meet the requirements of the program, uh, and specifically, so there's, um, let me just see the order. So we'll go in order as the first one is Safe Streets to Transit Program where that specifically details that it's within a certain radius of your transit hub, um, or it could be a, a bus stop. So, um, for us in the past, we have done projects that center around our train station, uh, which also overlaps then with our Transit Village and, uh, program which is separate. So, but this year what we are seeking is what we have called the, it is the Safe Streets, the River Road Corridor Bus Access Connectivity Project. Use a lot of words, hopefully it gets some appeal from DOT, but the intent is on the north side of River Road, you do have two bus stops. Uh, one has an actual bus shelter. It's usually behind the overgrown elephant grass that is over there, but, uh, access to them is limited, but it also highlights that Chatham Road itself, there's been, you know, much request for sidewalks there. It's kind of chopped up going down to DPW. So for this grant here is really just looking for ways to calm traffic on River Road, increase the sidewalk network and provide access to those bus stops. Um, so that would be the first grant application. Um, the second application is the Transit Village Program, which the city center is a designated transit village. This is somewhat competitive. I believe there's only a million dollars available for the, don't quote me, maybe it's 14 or 18 municipalities that are transit village designated. Uh, Summit happens to be one of them. We have received grants before to improve the Village Green. With the four phases being done there, we'll take another shot at what we're calling the Transit Village, uh, the Accessibility and Mobility Enhancement Project around the Village Green. So what we have here is we're, we're doing the Maybe Playground, which is fully inclusive. However, we don't have any, you know, accessible parking spaces adjacent to it. So we'd be looking to increase, um, you know, ADA accessibility throughout the southeast quadrant, which is where the Maybe Playground is, as well as in the YMCA and library lot, which needs some ADA upgrades. And all of these projects at the Village Green didn't focus much on the perimeter sidewalks, the larger ones. Um, some of those are nearing their life and need to be replaced. So we will incorporate that as well as, you know, additional pedestrian safety measures. And we're also going to, you know, lump in the bike shelter, which should be open shortly, uh, just to improve accessibility there even because we're utilizing the existing sidewalk network there. So it could be, uh, a little tricky to get access to it, but as that grows in popularity, we hope to increase that through this grant. And then the final two are their standard local aid grant submissions, which DOT continues to as of last Wednesday, always recommend that you apply for two and you prioritize them. Uh, in our history and other colleagues I have in other towns, they've never awarded two to your, um, I'll say smaller towns, but outside the 100,000 population cities. So we do always apply for two. For these grants though, the projects generally need to be, uh, a little more, have traffic volume. So you're not gonna just do a routine paving program. You'd look for roads that connect to other county roads, uh, service schools, businesses, um, you know, parks. So, you know, it does reduce the list we have. So we don't typically apply for the worst streets we have because it just may not qualify. So this year we do have as a priority, one is Bryant Parkway. Uh, in that neighborhood, we would do Edison and Mead, whose pavement is coming up, um, on the, uh, its life is, is nearing its end. Uh, so we'll try to get ahead of it there. There has been, you know, requests and discussions of sidewalks and traffic calming measures on Bryant Parkway. And then as a number two would be DeForest Avenue. Uh, again, that's pushing over 10 years since it's been paved, but now we have, you know, renewed interest in potentially bike lanes and other traffic, um, calming and pedestrian safety measures that we would put there. Um, as I said, we typically apply for two. We have never gotten more than one and 90% of the time we get our priority one. So I think that's a brief summary of the four grants we have.
Great. That was excellent.
Yes.
Thank you, Director Schreger. Okay. Um, do you have anything else to say?
Uh, no, I would just like to thank, uh, Director Schreger and his team. When I sat down in the last week or so to, to inquire about these projects, uh, just the knowledge that he has around what else needs to be fixed in Summit is, is phenomenal. And he makes a great point. We're, we're making maybe ADA accessible, but the perimeter sidewalks aren't accessible and we don't have enough ADA spaces at the library. Um, and if you look at down near River Road and Chatham, and one woman I think was killed last year down in that area, that Chatham Road area, there's a lot of businesses and there's no sidewalks. And I just wanted to give kudos to you and your team for just identifying what really is needed because it would have taken all of us, you know, a longer time. So, you know, great job with, with all these. And I would say, uh, City Administrator Baldwin, I, we would just have to highly motivate Millennium to make a really good sales pitch for these because these are really exciting projects that I think we really need. So thank you. So with that being said, I am bundling, these are resolutions 11933, 11932, 11931, 11930. I'd like to bundle those, Council President, and move for a resolution.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Uh, comments from the public on those resolutions? Comments from counsel? Councilman Boyer?
Briefly. Uh, one of the keys to these grants is that there are no matching funds. Uh, right? And that, that is, that is a huge thing. So these are all a hundred percent coming from, uh, the grants. The city does not have to match these funds. Um, DeForest, I think, is in need for some traffic calming, uh, measures. So I look forward to that. Passaic Avenue, as Councilwoman Hamlet, uh, uh, intimated is, needs some sidewalks. There have been residents, uh, dating back, you know, a year ago that says, listen, I can't cross the street because the sidewalks are not connecting. There are strips of Passaic Avenue where there are no sidewalks and it's, it's definitely dangerous. Um, Bryant Parkway, uh, another good one. So this is, to Councilwoman Hamlet's point, you know, I, I really hope that we, we get these grants. They would be really helpful for our town. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Other comments from counsel? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. We're moving on to Capitol Projects Resolution Number 10. Councilwoman Hamlet?
Okay. I think this might be my last one, so hold your breaths. Um, real quick, Council President, I just wanted to discuss this resolution or explain it. It's a little complicated, uh, for a couple of different reasons. This is 11882. Uh, this is regarding the recreational open space inventory. Uh, this is a foundational document required by the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection and Green Acres Program. Uh, so it basically lists all the lands within a municipality or nonprofit's inventory that are preserved for, uh, recreation and conservation purposes. Um, what I will say about this specific recreational open space inventory, when we received the funds for Maybe Playground, uh, which are Green Acres funds, $750,000, we're required to update our recreational open space inventory, which we updated last year. Uh, however, to further complicate it, Tatlock and Martins Brook Park, after four weeks of discussion, are one parcel on the tax map. So in order to be compliant with, uh, Green Acres, we have to include block, uh, was it 4011, which is all of Martins Brook and all of Tatlock on the recreational open space inventory. So that will go to the planning board. Uh, there are other, uh, parcels which I really think need to be on here, but in order to get the funding for Maybe Playground, we had to update at least this piece. So it took a while to get this right. Um, but there's a reason why we're doing it this way. It would be really expensive to subdivide that lot right now and, uh, it would just be, be, uh, be very com, be very complex. I also just wanted to note that in the memo here, there is a Scrivener's error, which I just wanted to point out in the last sentence. It says, Green Acres has confirmed that the improvements currently being considered at Tatlock would be impacted by this change. And, uh, after speaking with Director Schreger today, we both agreed there should be a "not" in there, would not be impacted. So, um, because these, because all of those funds are not going to be encumbered by, uh, Green Acres because they weren't funding the Tatlock piece. So I hope I was clear. If I wasn't?
For the record though, that language is not in the resolution.
Correct.
You're voting on the resolution.
Yes, I know. I just want to say for the, I just want to correct the record for the memo. Okay. So with that being said, this is Resolution 11882, whereas in a memo from the Director of Division of Engineering and Public Works, he advises that the Summit Recreation Open Space Inventory, the RSE, was previously revised by the Department of Community Programs on February 20th, 2024. Whereas it was discovered by NJDEP Green Acres that the area of Martins Brook Park, the map currently appears as including only five acres of the park and should actually reflect the entire area, which is closer to 30 acres. Uh, therefore, resolved by the common council of the city of Summit, the RSE list be, uh, reflect the full acreage of Martins Brook Park, which is closer to 30 acres. Uh, the mayor has certified, authorized to sign the certification confirming that the RSE list has been updated and will be sent to the planning board for review and signature. I'd like to move the last resolution.
Second.
All right. Comments from the public? Comments from counsel? Councilman Boyer?
Director Schreger, I'd like to, since this RSE expands the coverage of potentially, uh, the, um, the New Jersey Department of Protection, their authority, would, would we have to get, uh, NJDEP involved if we wanted to, let's say, build a Tatlock or do anything at Tatlock, parking or any kind of modifications down there? Will this kind of prevent us from doing things without oversight of the government?
Well, through you, Council President, it, it's, uh, you know, we have confirmed through them that a lot of the uses that have been proposed, um, well, actually all of the uses have been proposed, whether it's, uh, you know, field restoration or a new concession stand or parking lots, uh, all support the purpose of recreation and, and the uses, the uses that are approved through the Green Acres Program. Uh, the caveat would be if you're actually accepting funding from Green Acres, there might be some different rules and regulations put on the things you build, but they have confirmed, you know, verbally and in writing, so any of those improvements that have been kicked around for the last, you know, 20 years at the facility from Field House, et cetera, uh, can still be perceived as, as planned. So, yeah.
That is excellent. Um, and although I know a couple of members of the, of NJDEP, um, they were, they came right down to the Salt Brook to take a look at it and, and they were like, yeah, we'll give you permits. I know how difficult it could be if you wanted to do something and, you know, they were involved. And once again, NJDEP, I love you. I'm not saying that, you know, I'm just throwing it out there. Thank you.
Council President?
Yeah, if I could, just to follow up, it's, you wouldn't need permits. You might still need permits depending on what you do. There's the Martins Brook there, but you wouldn't need an actual permit to do work on, on Green Acres land. Um, you would just need to follow the rules and guidelines of Green Acres. So, yeah.
Other comments? Councilwoman Hamlet?
Uh, just one quick one. I just want to thank David Guida. Um, I think I might, might have sent him 50 questions about, about the RSE in the last couple of weeks. Um, so thank you for, for dealing with all of our questions. We really appreciate you. Did a great job. Just, we really just wanted to double check and make sure that there weren't any unintended consequences of putting something, um, in the RSE that we weren't aware of. And thanks to our, uh, city solicitor and his team for giving us that feedback as well. And I would say thanks to Director Schreger. We actually went in and looked at all of the tax maps today or a few of them. It was really interesting to see how old they are. Um, so thanks for, for going through. That was really cool.
Thank you. Other comments? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Uh, Capitol Projects, Number 11. Councilwoman Hamlet?
I am gonna have Jamel do this one.
Thank you, Councilwoman Hamlet. I am honored to read this one. This is ID number 11990, uh, Appointing a Housing Authority Member. Uh, I am honored to recommend Georgette Barnes for appointment as Commissioner to the Housing Authority. Ms. Barnes brings an extraordinary blend of financial expertise, executive leadership, and deep-rooted community service, precisely the qualities needed for principled and effective housing governance. With over four decades of experience in banking and currently serving as the Vice President of Retail Private, uh, Banker at P-PAC, thank you, Councilwoman Toth, P-PAC Private Bank and Trust. Ms. Barnes has demonstrated a, uh, unwavering commitment to ethical leadership and customer trust and her distinguished career in banking management, uh, will definitely spill over to housing oversight. And her qualifications, this is key, extend well beyond the private sector. For the past 13 years, Mrs. Barnes has volunteered as Executive Director of Premier Community Development Corp., a nonprofit, uh, working under the Housing Authority of Plainfield. So this role has placed her at the heart of housing advocacy, neighborhood revitalization and public accountability. And this is key because now she can offer firsthand insight into the structural and social challenges confronting the residents and administration alike. Um, on a personal note, and I didn't know this until I actually spoke to Mrs. Barnes, she said, "Jamel, I remember you when you were a kid. Your sister used to come over to my house down on Russell Place and she says, 'I know your, your mama, Edna.'" And I said, "And your sister Simone?" And I was like, "Oh, you know my family." Um, so, you know, it's always, it's a three circle, uh, 360 circle. And, um, she is a graduate of Summit High School and has been graduate of Summit High School and has been, uh, a pillar to this community for a long time, so I enthusiastically, uh, move this for adoption.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Comments from the public? Comments from council? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Well done, Councilwoman Hamlet. Uh, we're moving on to finance. Uh, Councilwoman Toth has a few tonight as well.
Okay.
I'll start with number one.
Well, thank you, and before I get going, interns, if you thought that was fun, it gets worse. Please go home.
You should watch from your couch.
Yes. Okay. Um, this is Resolution ID 11965, and this resolution rolls over existing bond anticipation notes that are coming due. Um, City Administrator Baldwin and Finance Director Kobeliska plan to join them to the recently approved 2025 capital projects and create one long-term bond issuance so that we can obtain, obtain the best terms possible. Um, but in the meantime, the city must pay off $13,430,100 of notes coming due, and this resolution just does, does just that for the short term. I move to adopt this resolution.
Second. All right, comments from the public? Comments from council? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Finance Number Two, Councilwoman Toth.
Thank you, Council President, and we're going to bundle Resolutions 11937, um, and 1199, 9911, I typed too many numbers.
Yep.
Typed too many numbers in there. Um, but these bundled resolutions follow our recently adopted salary ordinance, and the first one, um, 11937, provides for salary increases for long-term, non-union employees who have topped out on their step increases. And the second, 11991, authorizes salary increases for employees due to step and/or longevity increases as of July 1st. I move to adopt these bundled, bundled resolutions.
Second. Comments from the public? Comments from council? All right, I would just say on the effective January 1st, so this will be like back pay, right? Because there's calendar year, so, because we don't adopt our budget until, was it May this year, beginning of May? Um, these employees are all owed some back pay, so it'd be a nice little summer present for them. Um, all right, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, uh, Finance Number Four, Councilwoman Toth.
Thank you, Council President. This is Resolution ID 11970, and earlier this evening, we heard the presentation from Lisa Hibbs on the Government Energy Aggregation Program. Um, and we have previously passed an ordinance to join the Garden State Community Energy Cooperative, uh, the entity through which we hope to bring our residents lower electricity costs. And the next request for proposals is being prepared, um, as Ms. Hibbs described. To join in this round, we must complete and return a participation form by June 20th, that's Friday. So joining in the RFP doesn't require us to accept the results, and we're only going to do so if there's a savings to our residents of at least 5%. Um, so this resolution will authorize us to participate in the RFP. I move to adopt this resolution.
Second. Comments from the public?
Good evening, uh, Tom Ziver, 768 Springfield Avenue. Uh, first and foremost, to Council President McTiernan and Councilman Palowski, Boyer and Smallwood, um, I hope you all had a wonderful Father's Day, and I just wanted to say, I think it's really terrific to have local leaders who set an example, not only in their roles behind a dais, but as parents too, and that, of course, applies to our other council members and mayor as well. Um, I'd just like to commend and thank the council for its decision to establish an energy aggregation program and join the Garden State Community Energy Cooperative back in March. One of the things I've admired most about this council is its commitment to putting residents first, and these measures do exactly that by providing for potential savings on utility costs at a time when they're rising statewide. Um, there's a lot of pressing issues in our city regarding affordable housing, proposals for new development projects and public safety, and it would have been, uh, easy for something like this to fall through the cracks, but I'm hopeful that council will move forward with authorizing the completion of the participation form to Concord Energy Services, indicating some its intent to be included in the cooperative's upcoming energy auction. Um, as a resident, I truly appreciate all your hard work in connection with this initiative. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments from the public? All right, uh, comments from council? Councilman Palowski?
Yeah, I, I do think this is a good, uh, a good idea, and I just wanted to, Councilman Smallwood's not here today, but he was the driving force behind this, so I wanted to just thank him, if he's watching out there somewhere.
Great, other comments? Yeah, I, I would also like to thank Councilman Smallwood. He pushed this, I know this came up several years ago, and, um, when I was first on council, and it, the numbers didn't make much sense, uh, after a little while. Um, but, yeah, I think this is great, and these are the things that, um, I think, I will commend the state legislature for passing this, this is a while back, a dozen years ago or so. Um, it is a way that municipalities can aggregate and have buying power, and, um, so this was a very, very good idea to put some municipalities on par with our utilities. Um, so I support this because, um, life is expensive, and when we can save some money, it's, it's worth doing, so, okay. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, um, Finance Number Five, Councilwoman Toth.
Thank you, Council President. This is Resolution ID 11973. Um, and Summit Downtown, Inc. has historically been a party to Summit's insurance coverage for its downtown events, and in the past few years, Summit's risk management requirements have become burdensome for S- SDI. Um, specifically, our risk manager has begun requiring certificates of insurance from all performers and other vendors at least two weeks before an event takes place, and although SDI does obtain those certificates, getting them two weeks in advance is a challenge. Um, for instance, some of the, the cars that showed up yesterday, Cars of Croissants, they drove in with the insurance certificate. Um, and so to that end, SDI has purchased its own insurance for events, naming the city as an additional insured, and this solution eases the burden on SDI's staff while still meeting Summit's risk management requirements. And because of this change, Summit is removing SDI from its own insurance coverage. This will not increase our financial risk. I move to adopt this resolution.
Second. Comments from the public? Comments from council? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, last one, Finance Number Six, Councilwoman Toth.
Thank you, Council President. This is Resolution ID 11992. Um, Civic Plus LLC provides Summit with multiple technology products for which we pay more than $17,500 each year. So adding to that total annual payment requires a council resolution. Social media archiving services will allow Summit to retrieve all versions of a social media post by the city or a council member, um, in response to an Open Public Records Act request. This is more efficient than reaching out to individual council members or former, former council members to ask them to produce all versions of a post. And further, because the city's responsible for accurate retrieval, it should manage the process. The cost for this service is $3,487 per year, and the funds are available. I move to adopt this resolution.
Second. Comments from the public?
Lisa Allen, 27 Plain Street, um, through you, Council President. I'm just curious, when you said, um, a council member's post would be retrieved, if that is from their personal Facebook page and/or would it be, oftentimes, council members will set up or establish a council page? So which Facebook pages, or would it be Instagram, Facebook, um, TikTok? I don't know. So which social media sites and what do you qualify as archivable when it comes to council and elected officials?
Thank you. Other comments? All right, comments or questions, or questions from council?
I was going to say, perhaps, um, City Administrator Baldwin can do a better job of answering, responding to some of that than I can. I, I know we had this discussion last week in finance.
We did, and through you, Council President, I actually, if Jenny Huff, our Communications Director, doesn't mind weighing in, she has attended some lengthy seminars, and I think she's better qualified to answer than I about these questions with the social media archiving. Do you mind, Jenny?
Sure.
So specifically, what would you like to know about the social media, like why it's necessary? Because we talked a little bit about it at the committee meeting.
Well, I believe we had discussed that it was both individual pages of city business was discussed and council pages?
Yes, so it would include public council pages that are used for council purposes to talk about city issues and also for our, for our own pages, both through police and city and the live, uh, Department of Community Programs. Yeah, so all of those.
If, if a council person has a separate, personal, social media platform where they don't, they, they talk about their dogs and stuff like that?
Yeah, no, no.
That doesn't follow?
No, this is just for the public-facing pages.
On our city website, right, Jen?
No, this is for city council members, their own public pages when they're under, when they're in office, where they put city information out there as well. It's all, it's all public information, once it's put out there, if you discuss city businesses and you're an elected official.
Mm-hmm. But it would also include Instagram and other social media sites?
Yeah, all the ones that they have access to. So I believe it's Twitter, Instagram, and, um, Facebook.
Council President? Uh, I, one question. So, so currently, uh, and then, yeah, currently, so the way it would work now, since we don't have this service, if we have something that's opred, that would, then the clerk would reach out to the council member and then would have to then retrieve all that information? Is that how we're doing it?
Yeah, that's how it works. Yeah, it's just...
And so this will all be, this will all be automated then?
Yes, automated, um, and it was, if somebody changes their comment later, even if you comments on your page that they go back and edit it, the original comment is still accessible through the search, which is important because right now, through the normal archiving system from the social media, if somebody changes a comment they made on your page, you can't find it later. So it would give you kind of a second-by-second snapshot of everything that's on there.
Yes, Councilman Boyer.
That, that was actually my question. Um, do you also archive the comments, not just the elected officials, but also the public?
Everything that's on that page. It's like this meeting here, kind of considered. So any comments that we make here or anything, it's now public record. I will say, I think I put in the quote, was an add-on, which would save you a lot of time, which is, it would be a public-facing kind of portal on our website, so people could just search for it themselves through the archive system. So if they wanted to find something, they could actually just find it themselves.
Council President, may I?
Yes, please.
So Jenny, do, do the council members have to have the link on the homepage in order to be archived? How do they connect?
What they'll do is they'll connect it to the administrator of each page, and that email has to give them the right to be monitoring the backend of that social media page.
So can I ask a quick clarifying question?
Yeah.
So, um, like Lisa Allen asked a question about whether something on your personal page, if on your, uh, Council President's personal page, not his Council President page, he discusses a city issue, then does that then become archivable?
No, it won't be archived under this, so we wouldn't archive your personal pages, but I would recommend not doing that.
Okay. Thank you. I would just...
Yes, Councilwoman Hamlet?
I'll just make one recommendation, I've been thinking about this for a long time. A lot of times we create, or at least elected officials create their council page, whether, when they start running for office typically. We may want to think about starting those pages within the city because, once we're off council, I don't know how that works. I don't know how often it, but I, I would think we might want to rethink that, like once we get elected, then maybe the city takes on that Facebook page as an umbrella underneath the cities? Because otherwise...
No, I don't think necessarily, you will have your page. If you have a page where you just discuss city issues, like, hey, we passed this bill and people make comments and stuff like that, it's fine, as long as it's archived. People just have to be able to access it, it has to be public, it has to be open to the people. Um, if I'm even doing the city's page, you know, it's not, like, I'm not protected necessarily. I'm also held liable to make sure that what I'm putting on there is, um, is searchable and viable later, so it's all the public forum. So I wouldn't necessarily mean that we would have to run it, it's just that it's your public page while you're in office. When you're not in office, it's not archived anymore.
Perfect, thanks.
And, Councilman Boyer, please.
Because then you're an independent citizen.
Yeah, I, I agree with all this, because, like, going back and trying to find stuff is, you know, who's got time for that, right? But, um, if, but if I give my admin rights to the city, it's just, so, explain that, I'm not giving...
You wouldn't give your admin rights to the city.
Okay, so it's a...
So this just covers elected officials and protects them and their pages when they're elected officials, because you're held to a different standard than a private citizen. A private citizen can talk about what they want on the city all they want and, and public policy, and they can delete comments and hide comments and change comments, but when you're an elected official and it's a public page and you're talking about city issues that you will vote on, then it becomes a public forum.
Completely understand that.
Yeah.
But you made a comment that said that an email will go to the administrator of the account.
Just to let them monitor your page for you. They won't do anything on your page, and I won't do anything on your page, except it will be able to take snapshots of everything happening on your page as it happens in real time, so that it's searchable later.
Understood, but does that still give the city, like, let's say, someone wants to make a post in the city, does that admin access give you the access to do that? Now, I'm not saying that somebody wants to do it, right?
Wait, what are you, I'm sorry, what do you mean?
So, the administrator account, right? Would I, would I be giving the city administrative access to my account?
Okay, good question, yeah. No, you wouldn't, and so I, this access wouldn't even be coming to me, it would be through Archive Social. They would basically send an email to whoever, whatever email is linked to that account and say, "Do you give permission to Archive Social to be tracking this?" Not even your personal messages, it's just everything that's public there, so that if comments, so I would have nothing to do with it, I, they can't post on your behalf, they can't do anything except monitor it. That's it. Yeah. It would be exactly as you do it now, it would just be that everything is tracked, so that if somebody comes and makes a comment, and then that person wants to run for office later and they delete their comment, it's still part of the, it's still searchable.
Completely understand, just don't want to fall into the, with cyber events and everything else, we're all public elected officials, don't want to fall into the, uh, to the issue where, you know, something gets posted, we didn't do it, and there's all this confusion about who did what, I mean, that would be a nightmare.
Yeah, they wouldn't have the rights to post, they wouldn't be, even have the access to do that.
Thank you. Other comments? Councilman Palowski?
Yeah, so as I understand it, this is really just to make our lives easier, whoever called upon to provide something. So right now, I can access every version of every post that I've ever made, and I can produce them if I need to, but with this, somebody, this system will be monitoring me and everybody else along the way, so that I won't have to go through that.
Right, and also, you, what you can't monitor is comments that other people make on your posts, and if they change it or delete it later, that doesn't show up in your archive system, but it is still public information because it was put on your page. So that's where the biggest benefit, and legislatures have basically voted, you have to have that archiving capability. Um, that is all searchable, it's like if you come to a council meeting and people get up and talk, we couldn't, like, delete those comments later.
All right, other comments? Okay, thank you, Jenny.
No problem.
All right, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, we're on to our consent agenda. Do I have a motion, uh, to approve the consent agenda as presented? So move.
Second.
All right, uh, comments from the public on our consent agenda? Comments from council? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda passes. All right, so at this stage, I'll... Consent agenda passes. All right, so at this stage, I'll, our city officials, if you guys want to head home, thank you for staying as late as you have, appreciate, much appreciated.
Council President, before the Director of Finance leaves, I just want...
You almost got out, Jen.
Wow, so close.
Director Koblishka, I just want to thank you for your service, and know, and for you to know that we know what you've been doing, and all the hard work that you've been putting in. We talk about you, and we, and we recognize the help that you've been providing in the Finance Department, and we appreciate you, so thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
Good comments.
Now run, now go, now get out of here.
Aaron's like, come on. Thanks, Aaron, thanks, Jen.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Wow, the interns won't leave.
They really are interested in the government.
Goodness gracious. All right, we are on to our public comment section of our meeting. This is an opportunity for the public to make any comments on things that we're not on the budget. I would just ask that, as you approach the diocese, you state your name, your address, and please limit your comments to three minutes, so we can get through everyone's. So, anyone from the public like to comment tonight?
Good evening, Jaclyn LaSaracena, I'm a resident of Summit. I'm here to ask a few questions about public safety. The police protect the community, and we are so fortunate to have a truly excellent police force here in town. The police protect, and city leadership and the council communicate. They communicate to residents about public safety matters. I believe it's the case that in the last month or so, we've had three home invasions, Ashland, Sunset, and Larned, in addition to some number of attempted home invasions and car thefts. I feel the community needs more information, so we can make better decisions about how to protect our homes. I respectfully ask that council please share the following information, and more, if available, from the last year, and this information should, of course, be anonymized and aggregated. At what times of day are the home invasions and car thefts occurring? Are the criminals entering through backdoors, windows, garages? Do the homes have alarm systems, and are the alarm systems turned on at the time? Do the homes have security cameras that are capturing images that are helpful to the police? Where cars are stolen or attempted stolen, did the homes have key fobs in a Faraday box, and where were the cars parked? Separate but related, it's been about a month, almost, since the incident at Walnut Street. Would appreciate knowing when the community can expect an update on the results of the internal investigation. And respectfully, the large piece of metal near to the train station is called Louis. It was created by friend of Summit, Whit Godfrey. I think, actually, Madam Mayor Fagan, you may have generously sponsored Louis at the Summit Public Art Gala a few years ago. It is, it is brought to us, it is made possible by the dedicated volunteers and generous sponsors of Summit Public Art, of which I am a member myself, full disclosure, and I would encourage everyone to go and check it out. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, other comments from the public?
Okay, first off, you're not getting my name, you're not getting my address. I love that the youngsters hung around for this. You guys are gonna learn something today. I don't like how you encourage them to leave, to not see the public portion. I think that's disturbing, to say the least. The reason why you don't have to give your name is because we have freedom of speech. So when I come in here, and I protect my Fourth Amendment right by not sharing my privacy, where I live, what my name is, that's covered under the Fourth Amendment. The reason why it's covered under the First Amendment is because you can't force me to give my name or my address, because we have freedom of speech. Okay? So remember, these people work for you.
Address the council.
Absolutely. And I do want to say, I think it's very, I don't like how you always look at the clock. It's three minutes to speak. It's not enough time. Six minutes per month for the public to speak is not enough time, and after two minutes, well, the clock is not even on now, so we messed that up, but you, we have, you have to start it at three. I need to have three minutes.
You'll get your three minutes.
No, I understand, but the problem is you...
I set it at three.
Okay, but after two minutes, when you look at the clock, it's subconsciously, like, rushing the speaker.
I'm trying to keep track.
It's my time to talk, please. It's my time to talk, please. But I need to see how much time I have, and now it's at zero. So who's keeping track of the clock?
My time is up.
My time is up?
No, I think it's...
Oh, wow. My time is up. We have to start the clock at three minutes, please.
Add two minutes.
Two. And this is why they wanted you guys to leave, because they don't want to see this. They don't want you guys to see this. That's ridiculous. Oh, God, housekeeping here, I'm telling you. It's what a boring meeting, too. I almost fell asleep, and thank God the ordinance wasn't passed when Councilman Boyer and Councilman Pulowski voted on the napping ordinance, the sleeping ordinance, because then the chief could have arrested me for falling asleep at this boring meeting. Wow. So, you know, if you guys have looked into me, you know who I am. Hopefully, you've checked me out, and you should, you should do your homework. I don't come here, I don't come to towns, whether, it's not about political, I don't do left and right politics. I do right and wrong, okay? I was in a lavalette filming a meeting, as I'm doing right here. They asked for advance notice, I gave it to them. What they wanted doing? Arresting me. And you know who arrested me? The mayor. The mayor gave the order to have me arrested. You know who arrested me? His son, who's the sergeant. The other son is the chief of police. Hold it up.
Excuse me, is this pertinent to Summit?
I am speaking, I don't care if you care. It is my time to talk, you are not allowed to disrupt me. Roberts rules of order, please, Council President. It's my time to talk. I'm trying to make a point that it's, I am trying to, no, I can talk about whatever I want. It's not about left and right. I don't care if it's a full Republican council or a full Democratic council. I've been at Edison, all Democrats. I'm known for bringing props to meetings. You know what they did in Edison? They banned the American flag because of me. They banned props, because I like to bring props. So after hearing the stuff that you said last time, we're free to say whatever we want, that means we're free to say whatever we don't want. It was very disrespectful, what you said last time. So, I have a prop here. And this is an artificial intelligence magic eight ball. I'm gonna ask you right now, does Council President Mike McTernan understand the constitutional core issues surrounding this? Gotta give it a shake.
Mike McTernan is unable to understand constitutional protections.
Thank you, your time's up.
His virtual magic eight ball loves to give long, precise answers. However, the answer in simple terms is no way...
Thank you, your time is up.
Even artificial intelligence believes you don't understand constitutional values.
Well, that's awesome. Thank you for your comments.
Do better, do better.
Come back next time.
Oh, I will.
Awesome. Any other comments from the public?
Don't cut me off.
Lisa Allen, 27 Plain Street. I just wanted to say that, through you, Council President, thank you, I heard a comment about public safety, and the concern about public safety. Home break-ins and car thefts are one of your most important jobs, and keeping this community safe is job number one, and I know how hard it is to make legislation at a municipal level that keeps a community safe. And so I'm glad that we're all in agreement in this room, that we should have ordinances and various strategies to hopefully figure out how our homes don't get broken into. It is, my ice turned, you know, my blood turned to ice the other day when Tulip had another break-in. So I want to say thank you for continuing to keep your eye on this. I want to say thank you, even though I shouldn't, for the 12 affordable units in the church, they put their money where their mouth is, and that is phenomenal, and that's the kind of creative thinking that we need to keep focusing on, and keeping at the forefront. And thank you to the interns for being here. Thank the city for, you know, supporting them being here. You're gonna learn a ton, and I think this is absolutely the beginning of whatever career that you want, public service is one of the most important things you'll ever do in your life. So thank you to the city for allowing this opportunity. Thanks.
Thank you. Other comments from the public? Okay, we'll close the public comment section of our meeting, and go on to council member comments and new business. Who would like to start? Councilman Boyer?
Shout out to Mr. Anonymous. Listen, I watch Audit the Auditor, like, all the time, because, listen, I believe, I believe in people's rights, you know, they're important. I had, I don't know if there's anybody up here that has taken more abuse than me in the last, you know, year and a half, but you know what? You know, you listen to people, and, you know, it is what it is. We, folks have a right to make their opinions heard. In regards to law enforcement, you know, I leave it to the chief and his expertise, right? You want to listen to the professionals, and our police chief is highly trained individual. There's something called OPSEC, right? Operational Security. The thing is, when you post certain things on social media, and I do this, like, every day, I'm a cyber guy, right, the criminals read stuff, too. So they use that information against you, right? Who's got security cameras? Where are they located? Where most of the crimes are being committed? All that's good stuff, you know? I love a good criminal, because I fight them, like, every day at work, right? So you have to be absolutely careful about that. That's why we leave it to the professionals to post stuff about crime, because they understand operational security. It's very important. Lastly, I am extremely happy to see Glenwood Vita Gala and Weaver Street on our affordable housing plan. It, listen, I know it's gonna, how do we get there to rehabilitate and fix our current affordable housing that we have in Summit that is in dire need of repair? It should be our number one focus. However, we seem to always be focused about building things, but we have structures here in town that we've built, that we've built, excuse me, and just walked away from it. And it's like, well, how, the council president made a great point. It's like, we build affordable housing, but there's no plan to keep affordable housing, I'm talking about low-income housing, sorry, because there's distinctions, but there's no plan to keep it updated. So folks live in apartments that haven't been updated for 30, 40 years. That, I mean, it's a shame. As a community, we should be up in arms about this. But we're so focused about building stuff, right? But we have affordable housing here in Summit that we're not paying attention to. There should be more people coming in here saying, what's up with Glenwood and Weaver Street, our folks that we see every day? Last but not least, the Summit Police Department is hiring. If you know somebody who is interested in a wonderful career as a police officer, please tell them to apply. We have one of the most diverse police departments in the state of New Jersey, and I'm talking about diversity in terms of where they came from. Irvington, Newark, Patterson, these folks have come here with some good experience and good leadership here by our chief. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Other comments from council? Councilman Pulowski?
Thank you. So it is the graduation time of year, when you all get to hear my favorite letter from some professors written in August of 2017. It's titled, "Some Thoughts and Advice for Our Students and All Students. We are scholars and teachers at Princeton, Harvard, and Yale who have some thoughts to share and advice to offer students who are headed off to colleges around the country. Our advice can be distilled to three words: Think For Yourself." Now, that might sound easy, but you will find, as you may have discovered already in high school, that thinking for yourself can be a challenge. It always demands self-discipline, and these days can require courage. In today's climate, it's all too easy to allow your views and outlook to be shaped by dominant opinion on your campus or in the broader academic culture. The danger any student or faculty member faces today is falling into the vice of conformism, yielding to groupthink. At many colleges and universities, what John Stuart Mill called "the tyranny of public opinion" does more than merely discourage students from dissenting from prevailing views on moral, political, and other types of questions. It leads them to suppose that the dominant views are so obviously correct that only a bigot or a crank could question them. Since no one wants to be, or be thought of as a bigot or a crank, the easy, lazy way to proceed is simply by falling into line with campus orthodoxies. Don't do that. Think for yourself. Thinking for yourself means questioning dominant ideas, even when others insist they're being treated as unquestionable. It means deciding that one believes, not by conforming to fashionable opinions, but by taking the trouble to learn and honestly consider the strongest arguments to be advanced on both or all sides of questions, including arguments for positions that others revile and want to stigmatize, and against positions others seek to immunize from critical scrutiny. The love of truth and the desire to attain it should motivate you to think for yourself. The central point of a college education is to seek the truth and learn the skills and acquire the virtues necessary to be a lifelong truth-seeker. Open-mindedness, critical thinking, and debate are essential to discovering the truth. Moreover, they are the best antidotes to bigotry. Merriam-Webster's first definition of the word bigot is a person who obstinately or intolerantly, who is obstinately or intolerantly devoted to his or her own opinions or prejudices. The only people who need to fear open-minded inquiry and robust debate are the actual bigots, including those on campuses or in the broader society who seek to protect the hegemony of their opinions by claiming that to question those opinions is itself bigotry. So, don't be tyrannized by public opinion, don't get trapped in an echo chamber. Whether you in the end reject or embrace a view, make sure you decide where you stand by critically assessing the arguments for the competing positions. Think for yourself, and good luck in college. I got more. Graduation parking. Tomorrow is the middle school graduation, which is gonna be down at Tatlock, and the day after is the high school graduation. I ask that everybody please follow the parking directives that are down there. There will be additional signs in place. We don't park on top of stop signs, we don't park on top of corners, and we don't park in front of other people's driveways. I will call the police myself and ask them to ticket you if you do. So, plan ahead, and, and be courteous to our neighbors. Finally, oh no, two more things. I want to agree with Jamel wholeheartedly about Summit Housing Authority. We need to do everything that we can to help them get money to renovate. It's hard when we have these threats of builders' remedy lawsuits and fair share housing all over us, to remember what's really important, which is taking care of the people who we have here right now in our public housing who need our help, rather than developing some gigantic building so that a small portion of it can be affordable. And thanks for reminding us of that always, Jamel. Finally, I want to congratulate the boys and girls lacrosse teams. The girls are done for the year. They are Group Three Champions, defeating Moorestown by scoring a goal with one second left. I was there in the pouring rain, it was a pretty good crowd and lots of fun. And the boys won as well, but the boys are continuing on in the Cursed Cup, which is the privatized tournament of champions that Coach Davidson and Coach Flynn and some others put together after the NJ SIAA got rid of the Tournament of Champions. So Summit will play its, maybe arch-rival, Westfield, at least in Union County, tomorrow at Kane University, 4:30, I believe. We're 1-1 against them this year, but they got us in the Union County Finals, so they're ahead of the game right now, so hopefully we can take them, take them tomorrow. So come out and see them.
Thank you. Other comments from council?
Council President, I would like to ask Chief Peters to come up and just address the residence question.
Please.
Thank you.
Chief?
I think she actually left already, so, just to provide some context, on May 23rd, 2025, at approximately 13:20 hours, two Summit Police Officers received an alert on their mobile license plate reader advising them that a stolen vehicle had just driven past them on Broad Street. In an attempt to locate the vehicle, the officers returned to the area the vehicle was last seen and located it. Prior to initiating a felony stop, the officers relayed the license plate to our regional dispatch center, who confirmed it was entered in the system as stolen and actively wanted, which is a felony offense under New Jersey law. I understand the presence of multiple officers, and drawn weapons can be unsettling to the driver and witnesses, especially in a residential neighborhood. However, when dealing with felony-level offenses involving stolen vehicles, there are inherent safety risks to both officers and the public. Officers responded based on information available to them at the time. Once the driver was secured and the scene was deemed safe, it was determined that the vehicle, which had actually been previously stolen, had been recovered by another police department and returned to the registered owner, owner who was a family member of the driver. Unfortunately, the police department where the vehicle was located never executed the removal of its stolen status in the system. As a result, the driver was ultimately released without charges. Now, in alignment with our commitment to professional accreditation standards and continuous improvement, all critical incidents, particularly those involving potential use of force or heightened public concern, are subject to a comprehensive internal command review. This review process includes a thorough examination of body worn and dash cameras, officer reports, communication logs, and adherence to departmental policies and procedures. Supervisory staff assess actions taken to determine whether protocols were followed appropriately, identify any areas for improvement, and implement corrective measures or additional training if necessary. These reviews are an essential part of maintaining public trust and ensuring that our officers uphold the highest standards of conduct and accountability. Following the internal review of what took place on May 23rd is the determination of all reviewing supervisors, including myself, that officers acted in accordance with all laws, regulations, directives, and guidelines issued by the Attorney General and county prosecutor, as well as agency policy and procedures, for what was considered a potentially dangerous and serious situation. I do want to take this time to commend our officers. They did a great job in reviewing all the body worn camera footage and motor vehicle recordings. I gotta be honest, it's a video that you could probably show in the police academy, that's how great of a job they did. Obviously, our heart goes out to the driver, found himself in an unfortunate situation. That's never our intent to expose anybody to that, but it was an unfortunate circumstance. In response to the other inquiries, I provided Councilman Boyer prior to last meeting, so these statistics only go through May, unfortunately, they're a little out of date, but we are seeing burglaries and attempted burglaries to motor vehicles trending downward since 2023. At this point in time, in '23, we had 30. In 2024, we had 10, and then again till through the end of May, which has increased during the month of June, we were only at 3. I do wanna echo some of Councilman Boyer's sentiments regarding operational security. That being said, one of the things I can say is we have seen a variety of different approaches. You know, you asked law enforcement five years ago, how do you solve the problem of stolen cars? We'd say remove your key fob and lock your doors. We saw a transition into a little bit more brazen approach. Once our residents got really good at that, they started entering residential dwellings. Obviously, the city of Summit is not alone in this revision to the process, to the criminal process, which is why we've implemented several security measures, one being the fixed license plate readers. We also have mobile license plate readers. We utilize our technology, our drones, implement additional resources to the road when we deem necessary based on data. But one thing I can tell you, in analyzing this data, you know, the time of day might not be narrowed down the day of the week or the approach to doing it. We have seen, you know, a target specific to the Range Rovers, Land Rovers, and BMWs, specific X-Series. So if you do own those vehicles, we do highly recommend that you take the extra measures, not only to contact us for a home security assessment, but in securing them. If you can secure them in your garage, secure your belongings, secure your key fobs in an area that are not in plain view to maybe an exterior window or door, because oftentimes these burglars are entering the house with the intent of obtaining the key fobs to get the vehicles that are in the driveway and are typically, you know, kind of spooked, for lack of another word, with any intervention. We've had residents yell, we've had residents turn on lights, we've had alarm sound, and then they pretty much kind of beat feet, so. Anybody has any questions on how to better protect themselves, feel free to reach out to us anytime. Like I said, we do have the home security assessment program, and we are, you know, as transparent as we can be whenever these incidents do come in. We don't try to sugarcoat them, we give as much information as possible, so people can then better protect them, take that information and better protect themselves and their families. I'll open myself up for any questions from council if you have any.
Chief, one question. Your home safety assessments, on average, roughly ballpark, how many of those do you do a month for residents?
So, we hit the ground running. When we first launched the program, I wanna say we did roughly 60 in the first three months, which was a heavy lift for our officers. We had six that initially got certified. They work all different shifts. Obviously, our primary resource would be our Officer Dave Cotiga, he's in our community policing unit, he's during regular business hours. But we did certify officers that work both nights and weekends, so whatever, we wanna make it as convenient for the residents as possible. But on average now, we tend to revisit it through social media posts. It is one of the top posts, if you go to our Instagram and our Facebook, that you will see, you know, anywhere between three and six, I would say, a month. I'd like to see more, because I think overall, we've probably just cracked maybe about 100. And from what I understand, that's a very small percentage of houses that are in town, so. And I do understand that there's a financial liability to some of the recommendations, you know, that's not our intent to create any additional financial burden, but it is good to kind of create kind of a list of areas, or hierarchy maybe, for areas you want to address in and around your property, that maybe you might not have thought of without our intervention, so.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Questions? Okay.
I was just gonna say, Chief, thanks for everything you do. It doesn't go unnoticed. We see so many patrols, and you're all working so hard, and we thank you for putting your lives online every day for all of us, we don't take it lightly, and we're just proud to have you as chief.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
And I just, and I just want to say thank you for your presentation just now, but also mention that I had my own home security assessment done. Officer Cotiga came, and I got a puppy out of it, so.
Dogs are a good deterrent.
Dogs are a good deterrent. It's number one on the list, and I was trying to find a way to pressure my husband into getting a new dog, so.
I can tell you a barking dog is a good deterrent, and motion lights are a very good deterrent as well.
And they're not super expensive.
Yep.
The dog maybe, but the lights are really.
Yeah, the dog is down the other end.
Other comments? Councilman Boyer?
Chief Peters, last year, this may be a tough question, I'm not sure, but last year, Chief Zagorski was asked a question of how does Summit compare to the surrounding towns? And last year, around this time, Chief Zagorski said that he was always cautious, he always gave me that look like, knock on wood, Councilman Boyer. But he said, we are, we are doing way better than surrounding towns. And he said, be cautious, because it could go up, you know, at any moment. But is that still the case today?
You're getting the same look.
I'm gonna give you the same look that retired Chief Zagorski probably gave you last year. I can't comment on the statistics for other towns, not knowing them, and I don't wanna, you know, make a blanket statement. What I can tell you is that we're doing everything we can to mitigate this problem. Like I said earlier, we're utilizing technology, we're bringing in extra resources, we're participating, if you saw our news post within the last two weeks, the county prosecutor's office, any, you know, investigations that they're bringing, pools of officers together to support them, information sharing, you know, data analysis, everything we can be doing, expanding upon our, our resources and our manpower, so we have more rubber hitting the road. And our guys are out there. I go over our calls for service every Monday with the mayor during our brief, and, you know, I can't tell you how many times I've come across calls for service where officers are just driving, you know, residential streets through the night, and they'll see in ajar rear door, you know, liftgate on an SUV, or passenger side door, or even a garage door. And it's unfortunate, because nine times out of 10, it's an accident by the resident. We wake them up in the middle, middle of the night, advise them of their, you know, where they kind of fell short. And for me, myself, I also live in an area that's tended, tends to be more targeted for the auto thefts and the home burglaries, and I just have a nightly routine. I know these things can happen anytime during the day, but at 9:00, even if we're already settling in for bed, because that's usually around my bedtime, right after the kids go down, I make it a point to go downstairs, make sure, I lock my doors, wife's, you know, car doors are locked, the interior door to the garage is locked, and that all the exterior doors are locked as well. You know, we don't wanna, certainly don't wanna create easy targets for these, for these individuals.
One more thing to say, and it's just to say, you know, to commend our detective bureau and our police department. We have recovered a lot of vehicles, we've caught a lot of the car thieves. I feel like that should be shouted.
So we do have a few, a few press releases, kind of on the back burner, that should be coming shortly with some long-term investigations that have kind of come to fruition, which have been great. I do wanna, you know, echo the mayor's remarks, the detective, detective bureau has been firing on all cylinders, they're doing a great job, very motivated, young group of guys. And, you know, to the mayor's point, the vast majority of these cars that do get stolen out of, out of the houses in town are recovered within 24, 48 hours. If they're not, they tend to be shipped off and in a container heading somewhere else. But our detectives are, they make it very known that if you're gonna steal a car out of the city of Summit, we are gonna make our way down to Essex County, where these cars are last seen through the license plate readers, and we're gonna do everything we can to recover them in a very short period of time, not only to make it less inconvenient for the homeowner or the car owner, but also to send a message that, hey, we're just gonna not allow you to, if every time you come to the city of Summit and you take a car, it gets recovered within the next six to 12 hours, then maybe we just, you know, I hate to say it, move on to another town, because, you know, we're very proactive. I know there's a lot of chiefs that don't authorize their officers to pursue due to the risk of liability, there's a lot of chiefs that don't authorize their detective bureaus to go down to Essex County, because it does, you know, kind of raise a level of danger for them as well. But we're doing it. I can't, you know, can't not justify in doing it, because we have to do everything we can, so.
Thank you. Yeah, I would just say, you know, one home burglary is one too many, but I was not fully aware of those statistics on the trends until you mentioned them. And I want to say thank you to you and all your officers, you guys are doing a hell of a job. And I know things can change, and things go up and they'll go down, so yeah, touch wood. But fantastic job, and I do think it is, it is important. You have to have an attitude of vigilance, and what you just said really rings true, Chief, because, you know, you don't want to accept this, and showing that you're not sends a signal to would-be criminals, like, go, go do your business somewhere else. This is not, we are not going to tolerate business as usual. This is not, oh, it's New Jersey, stuff happens. No, not in our town. And yeah, does that not mean there's gonna be zero crime? Of course not. But I applaud your attitude, and I know that filters through the entire force, and you guys are doing a heck of a job, so thank you.
We appreciate it. Thank you.
Last thing, Council President.
Yes.
And I know, I know, but this is important, because I think the public doesn't know this, about the law change, right? Means justifying the ends. Last year, last summer, the legislature passed a bill where if you burglarize a home, it doesn't matter if people are upstairs sleeping, or if they're, it doesn't matter if you come into contact with them, it becomes a first-degree felony. That's a big deal. And once people start getting these minimum 10-year sentences, they're gonna say, do I need to go in that house to get that car key and spend 10 years in state prison? I mean, I think, I think we'll, and the fact that you go down there and get the car and do an investigation, which sometimes leads to an arrest, where somebody can get 10 years, people start weighing it out and saying, maybe there's some other different crime I want to do and go in somebody's house, so.
So that, that new charge was, was one of, I think, a dozen charges that we had on one of the individuals, that one was involved in the Greenbrier home burglary back in February. So that first-degree charge did stick on that, so.
Well done.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
All right, other comments from council?
I'll be quick, I promise. You've heard enough from me today. I just want to thank all the interns for sitting through this long meeting. Great job and good luck with all your projects. I would say, use this opportunity to ask any of us questions. If you don't understand something or something's not clear, there's, there's no dumb question. The city staff will tell you. I probably ask, how many questions did I ask you today, Tammy?
Like 50 a day, 50 a day.
Councilwoman Hamlet asked the most questions.
But you know, I would say that you should ask questions to the point where if you don't understand, what I always say to Tammy is, I know you're right, but I still don't understand it, so I'm gonna keep asking you until I understand it. So use this as an opportunity to engage with the elected officials, we're here as a resource. You can even ask us how we would deal with Mr. Anonymous, or if you were in that spot, how would you have dealt with him? Like, use this as a, as a learning experience and really challenge yourself during the week to ask questions. You can ask David how crazy I drove him today about asking him questions. But, you know, welcome to Summit, for those who are coming back. Megan, great job with all these folks, and please, I'm gonna hold you accountable for asking questions, okay? Lastly, I would say, we are, as Council President said, we're very hopeful that we will be ending round three this week, and projects like tonight with the Methodist Church just prove that we're really working hard to have development, but have it within the scale and the character of Summit and do it right. We didn't have to do Broad Street West, we didn't have to put the Wells Fargo Plan in our fair share plan, right? We can always amend that. We're doing it right in Summit, and as Councilman Boyer said, we have our own Summit Housing Authority residents that we, we have to make a priority, and we take it very seriously. There's a lot of meetings, you'll see at the end of your packet tonight, I think there's four this week. There's Milburn, Chattenborough, there's a lot of planning board meetings coming up in the next, you know, pay attention, go to the meetings, and engage your, your local neighboring towns, because all of that development is gonna impact Summit as well. And they are this week, and they're in the back of your council packet, so I just wanted to, to mention that. And just want to say thank you to the city staff for all you do. Rosie, I'm sure this is the last thing you're gonna be doing on your, your wedding anniversary, but thanks for, Frank, for lending us our wonderful Rosie. That's it, thank you.
Other comments? Yeah, I would just say, I'd echo everyone's, congratulations to our graduates from the middle school and the high school. Graduation is a time of new opportunities, new beginnings, it's, it's a great time to reflect, but it's a great time to look forward, and everyone should be proud of that, and I know their parents should be proud of that, because they did put a lot of effort into creating an environment that their kids can succeed in as well. I will say, enjoy it, but enjoy it responsibly, okay? And, and that's all I have for this evening. Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I'll second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone, good night.